I'd like to call to order the June 7th, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18, and then in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Counselors? Brede Bender?
Present.
Crocker?
Present.
Cullum?
Agwone?
Present.
Flores?
Here.
Rapkisette?
Present.
Hebert?
Present.
Leveck?
Present.
Neary?
Present.
Schnep?
Here.
Stein Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us all, and please bear with me for a moment, to remember and remember the family of James Allen Walker. He passed away on the 17th of May at Cape Cod Hospital. He was a lifelong resident of Hyannis. He leaves behind his wife Sylvia and his children Jimmy and Lynette of Hyannis, and he was pre-deceased by two children, Cheryl and Richard. He was inspired by the true life story of the Pendleton, so he joined the Coast Guard after graduating Barnstable High School. He graduated first in his class for aids of navigation, and after the Coast Guard, he was a civil servant for the Coast Guard, mainly down in Woods Hole. He loved the ocean, ships, and mainly lighthouses. He was known as Mr. Lighthouse. If you get the chance to go out to Race Point Lighthouse, he is the reason it is what it is today. Also, with a group of volunteers, he designed the top of the Sandy Neck Lighthouse. He was one of the very first volunteer citizens for the Barnstable Police Department, and for years and years, he was there every Friday morning. He was a true Barnstable and Hyannis resident. At the wake, there was a beautiful service by the Masons, and donations in his memory can be made to the Shriners Hospital, the Coast Guard Museum, or the American Lighthouse Museum. And again, please remember him and his family in your prayers and your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now is the time for public comment, so if anyone wishes to speak, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and limit your time to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Tina Carey. I have a business in Hyannis, and I reside in Centerville. I was here on April 5th to inform you about the illegal activity of the Business Improvement District. They removed seven properties from the bid tax list. I heard from Ruth Wild, through a phone call, that she said she stands behind the 1999 vote of the town council, and at that vote, we had 30 days to opt out of the bid. I opted out in 1999. I have a copy of it, and I also have other people who opted out, who asked me to speak on their behalf. The bid map has not changed since 1999. The Roadhouse Cafe is on the bid map, and the four properties at 540 Main Street, and also the Scudder Oil Building on South Street. The description of the property reads that all property north on Newton Street, from South Street all the way to Old Colony, are part of the bid district. There is no disputing this. I have asked the town to do something, nothing's being done. There are 10 of us who are the original opt-outs when the bid was formed in 1999, and if anybody is going to get a free ride in the bid, it should be the people who originally opted out, not people that are making up stories to get out of the bid. So, this is a corrupt organization that we do not want to be a part of. And we have other people here. I received a bill from the bid for over $8,000 in bid fees that I do not owe. They keep billing me. How do seven properties get removed from a tax list through a phone call? And I have documentation that is filed with the town clerk that I am an original opt-out of this bid, and that should be honored. We should, there were about 20 of us, but 10 people have sold their property, and so the new people were forced into the bid. A lot of people were forced in because it was never disclosed to them at their closing that they had the option to opt out. They had 30 days after they bought their property to send a letter to the town clerk to opt out of the bid, but nobody told them about it. They had no idea. I have a woman here today that's going to tell you her story. I am not the only one that feels this way, and I think we deserve a little respect. We did what we were supposed to do, and it should be honored. I'm going to leave this with the town clerk. I'm going to ask her to have it stamped, and if she would put it in the file with the town clerk's office, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Lori Lundholm. I also have a building on Main Street, and I live in West Barnstable. I'm one of the people that, I was never notified when I bought my building in 2008 that I had to join the bid. I had a long conversation with the then-head of the bid, I think it was Elizabeth Wolfbein, I don't know if she actually still is. She was telling me to try to find value in the $1,000 a month that I'm supposed to pay the bid. I tried my best to find any value in it, but there is none for me. I'm on the very west end. They don't power our sidewalks. We don't have the flowerpots. We don't have any of the good amenities that they have in the other areas, so I'm trying to opt out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Janet Cook, and I've been an owner of property on Main Street for 40 years, and I was one of the original ones that wanted to know part of this organization. And as Lori said, they'll put their little colorful signs halfway down Main Street, but there's no advantage for us to be part of the bid organization. And I just received a bill also for over $7,000, and I understand that some people now have liens on their property. So, having been there for 40 years, and then being forced to be part of a group that I don't want any part of, I think is pretty corrupt. So, I have a copy of my bill. Would you like that?
Give it to the clerk. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Barbosa, and first, I wanted to say thank you to the former chief for his dedication and for trying to bring this community together. And I have to tell you, I think most members of our community, when we realized he was leaving, there was a little tension, because we didn't know what was, or who was coming in, and we didn't know if we were going to be joining the rest of the country with open season. But I have to tell you, when I saw the three names of the finalists, I did relax, because the three of them, I think any one of the three could have held that seat. They all have their mistakes, but they're human mistakes. And the one thing I will say about them is that they had the same goal in mind of coming and bringing the community together. I do not believe Hyannis is where we should be. We're further along than the rest of the country, I think, but through Chief McDonald, we at least are still climbing up the hill, but we're climbing up together. And the Unity Day, thank you to my son Jesse and Andre, and the other young men of action, Kyle and David Adams, and others. They worked very hard to bring all of this together, to make us a community. So, I am here to say that I will give full support to the new chief coming in, as always, when it's a positive thing. And there's no other way to say it but to say it. There are three things I think that I'm counting on from any human being that's holding that seat. One, you take the whole community. The whole community as a whole. When you see young men of color, do not take their outfits and target them because of the way they look, because to be honest, we had some pretty stupid looks, too, when we were growing up. Our fads were kind of rough, let's be real. But the other thing is, nobody, nobody likes a criminal, a real criminal. You will get full support from any community when you treat all criminals the same. If you arrest a white, young criminal, you treat him with respect as a human being, you treat the person of color who is a true criminal with the same respect. None of them need to be kicked in the face, thrown to the ground. I'm not putting that on Barnstable, I'm not saying that's them, but that has become the rest of the country. We know this. None of those people need to be treated in that manner. The third thing is, I pray, if your life is really at risk, and you really do feel at danger, shoot them in the leg. They're going to reach down and grab their leg. You don't have to kill somebody. That is going to turn, that is going to make our community say it's us against the police. And right now in Barnstable...
Got about 30 seconds.
I don't do that, because I lose my train of thought. I got you. I know, but you know, just chill. Okay, well, let me go. Anyway, what I'm trying to say is, you will have the support, because if it turns where, for some strange reason, we decide to go backwards, I'll go backwards, and we'll be fighting full force. You know, just respect everybody. Let our community continue to go forward, and you'll have the support. So, that's that. Thank you. And one thing I've got to say, you, listen, I know you're limiting people to three minutes,
but... That's right.
Yes, but when you do that in the middle of their thought...
Some people would go on for 30 minutes if they didn't do that.
Honey, I could go on for an hour, but I'm old.
I know.
But listen, but what I'm trying to say to you, I'm in my 60s, and I'll lose my train of thought, I'll be like, what was I saying? So, your best bet is just put your hand up, give me some kind of clue.
I'll get some Jeopardy music in here.
That'll work, because when you say it, you'll lose it. All right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Narinda Thien. I own the property on 505 Main Street. I get a lien on my property from the bid, so my question to the bid is, is I'm alone, or they have to put lien on everybody? So, I need that list, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name's Lori Crowley. I'm a resident here of Barnstable. I went to the school committee last night to talk about the MOU between the Town of Barnstable Town Manager and Superintendent of the Schools for the field upgrades and the affluent discharge. So, I feel it's very important to be here tonight to voice some of our concerns. In the MOU, on page 2, Part C, under A, it stated, "Affluent Discharge Study. The town will undertake a study of the efficacy of use of the combined field for affluent discharge on or before," there was no date there, "and deliver a copy of the report to the school. Concerns I have regarding this study are: the exact location, including if there could be, or any possible future plant expansions, as the MOU leaves open the possibility of expanding the affluent discharge to other fields in the future; potential impact on the environment and the community that abuts these fields, as well as hundreds of schoolchildren and community who use these fields; potential impact this will have on Dunn's Pond, which is already in a fragile state, and this leaching field will not help the ecosystem of the pond; potential impacts on our water quality and how this will also affect any food we eat from our gardens; our property values will go down due to the unknown impacts on this affluent discharge; potential odor and appropriate control mechanisms planned; site work, which would include location of roads to access this area, ditches or drainage, pipelines, and excavations; other related issues such as slope stability, and will this area be able to withstand and undergo movement; will there be an assessment of the ground to accept the proposed discharge, and not during just the driest season, as I am very concerned with viruses, and I mention this because the primary treatment site for pathogenic viruses is the unsaturated zone, under the leaching field facility. Once viruses reach the saturated conditions of the groundwater, there are very few mechanisms that work at removing them, other than time and distance. Flooding already takes place in our neighborhood on Dunn's Pond Road, and many residents are running some pumps 24/7. We do not need any more development. Sediments from runoff, development, land clearing, recreation, and septic waste all expedite the level of eutrophication, which causes a dense growth of plant life and death of animal life from lack of oxygen. Can we be assured that there will be no lasting effects? I would hope for the neighborhood, the environment, and all the schoolchildren of Barnstable and community using the fields. We would think very seriously about allowing this to happen. We in this neighborhood know why we don't want this subservice affluent discharge, but can any one of you, or all of you, please tell me why you would want this subservice affluent discharge located in your backyard? Lastly, not knowing the protocol of an MOU, I would think there would be some sort of public notice. Have the abutters been notified of this MOU, and is there a certain protocol for this? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Kathy Duran, and I also am a resident of Dunn's Pond Road, and the citizens or the residents of Dunn's Pond Road are coming together to oppose the MOU, quite frankly, because of the water conditions that we're already under. I remember Mr. Flores saying at the last town council that he was really a lover of trees, and he was upset about the trees that were being taken down along Route 6A. Here's a photograph of Dunn's Pond Road, a view from the senior center, 20-plus dead trees because of the oversaturation of the grounds already. That's this year. Here's a photograph, and I'll leave these with you, of the end of our road. No, this is not the pond, although it looks like the pond. This is the end of our road. About 15 feet down the road, you will see a fire hydrant that is currently under about two feet of water. This is not the location, and I'd love to save the town a lot of money on doing these studies and just to have, and Mr. Hebert, God bless him, he came down to the end of my street, and he saw the conditions, and I think he is going to recommend that this is not the place. We could stop at the beginning, instead of going through the phases. What used to be, my husband Matt couldn't make it tonight, but he wanted me to point out in this photograph, what used to be hardwood trees in a beautiful forest when we moved down here 30 years ago, after the development of the new high school, have now become dead trees. They're white, they're gray. That's because we had more runoff from the high school fields. We were all young families then. We didn't know about, that you could actually speak up at a town meeting and say, we're having a problem with this. Now, we're in our 50s and 60s, and we're grandmas, and we're here. So, I'd like to present these to you, and wholeheartedly ask you to look for an alternate site. Barnstable is a big town. I'm sure there are a lot of other places to look. I don't believe, this pond, now wetlands, abuts the soccer field, and the lacrosse field, the fields that were put in at the end. I know someone at the, from the school committee, we spoke last night, thought that Dunn's Pond only went as far as the football field. No, it extends almost all the way to 28, and the only thing separating the last house from the senior center is this, what used to be a beautiful kettle pond.
30 seconds.
I appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hebert.
You can leave that with the clerk. Anyone else?
I'm Michelle Mangalo. I have property on Main Street, Hyannis. I also want to speak regarding the Hyannis Main Street bid. I'm also opt-out in 1999. I'm one of the three, Tina and I, and one more gentleman right here in the audience. And I just received a bill also for $20,000. And for what I see, it's not what I deserve to pay that kind of money. That's one. Two, when it was formed in 1999, there was Cynthia Cole was in charge, and I actually helped her out to get five more people on Main Street, because she was running out of time, and she said, "I'm not going to be able to form this organization unless I do that, and I know you know a lot of people, and I get a lot of people." And she was under one condition to tell me that. Everything will be democratically. It will be assessed democratically, and it will be done nicely. But it's not. When I find out, it's not. It's not going to be assessed democratically. They're going to do a cap of $4,000, which means if you have a larger property, you are not going to pay more, which means when you talk to the, all the board members, and you say, "Hey, how do I get to pay for this?" Or pass it on to your tenants. Well, guess what? If you have a large property, you can divide it into a lot of tenants, and you can divide $4,000 on 10 tenants, and you're only going to be $400 apiece. But if you only have two tenants or three tenants, then you're going to pay a lot of money. It doesn't add up. Your tenants were not going to pay that. It's going to be a big burden on them. That's one. Two, if, when they says they're going to do, assess it democratically, okay? They said 3,000, the $4,000 that way, but $3 per mil. It was going to go down a little less, but they didn't do that, okay? That's another thing. Then they said, you cannot, once you're in, you cannot get out, because if you have it in a trust, you have to sell it to another trust, or you have to sell it to another person. So, if you have a mortgage, it's impossible for you to do that. The bank is not going to go around and give you a mortgage to another person that is not there. So, they will not do that. So, it's kind of made in a way, I'm not going to say a sneaky way, but it's not a nice way. It's not in a way that it's, everybody can be happy with it, you know? Right now, if they give all the other people a chance of, let's say, three months, to get all the people who do not want to be in it to come up front and say, yes, we don't want to be in it, they probably won't. But what they do, they always say, well, let's get a proxy, and they go around and collect all the proxy from people who are not there, and then they say, hey, we won, we're going to redo it again. And that's not fair. And I'm going to give you a copy of my bill, too.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Steve Luciani from Centerville. I'm here to, just to ask you to try and reverse the ban on these small, little signs that I put on the islands on my adoptive spot in Centerville, on Route 28, Old Stage Road. For like 18 years, I've been putting these signs there, and the reason I put them there is just to give people a lift in the morning. There's signs, nothing political, they're comical, they're educational, and it, from police to firemen to little kids to adults, they love the signs. I made the mistake of putting a sign there that had a controversial name on it, and one person didn't like it, so the town said we can't have the signs anymore. Now, I know the town has a law stating that you can't have signs on town-owned land, but you know, there's always exceptions to rules. It's like there's a fellow in Howard who had a tractor banned on his hayride. They said after 20 years, you can't do it anymore. Well, the governor Baker, I think, overturned that. Now, I don't know if, you know, you guys and ladies, when you run for office, you have a 30-day exception to put your signs on town-owned land, I think. But I love Barnstable, I love the people. I don't do this to be negative. I do it just to give people a little lift in the morning, instead of listening to all the news, the negative news out there. This is just something that I think people love. They want me to sign a petition going, but I have something personal in my life that I can't do that. So, I just hope you'll dig down into your heart and think about this. I know it's, it's something small, but it's something big to the people of Centerville. Here's one little, here's one little thing. Heroes. What a guy in a boat does. Say, heroes? Heroes? All right, forget it. But that's the type of stuff I have, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name's Allison Alessi. I live in West Barnstable, and I'm here tonight as a member of the Renewable Energy Commission. I'm here with my whole committee, actually. They're, all six of us are here, but I'm speaking for myself, because we really haven't had a long time to collaborate on this. We just learned, I think 48 hours ago, that the town council is voting to review our commission this evening, and we just wanted to come tonight and let you know what we do. We've actually accomplished a lot. I've been on the committee for nine years, and I think we've done a lot of things. In the last couple of months, we've gotten a grant from the Cape Light Compact to complete an energy baseline for the 300 buildings that the town owns. It was started by our former energy coordinator, and it's being completed by the Cape Light Compact. We think this is really valuable data to have as a baseline, so we can move forward and improve things. We think our job is education, number one. We always, often, at our meetings, have experts from different places come to present to us, our meetings are televised, and hopefully folks see them. We have experts from the Cape Light Compact, we've had home energy raiders, we've had folks from the state come. In the last year, we've been working a lot on moving Barnstable towards becoming a green community. We've spent a lot of time meeting with the Cape Light Compact and meeting with state officials. We can confidently say that if Barnstable were to become a green community, we would receive somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000, at least for the first year, which could be used for energy-efficient upgrades to a school or a municipal building, and we've spent a lot of time researching them. We've also worked with Vineyard Wind, and we've met with them and got, to get educated on their project, and we're really excited that they're working with the Town of Barnstable moving forward. Incidentally, all of the issues that we're working on not only have environmental benefits, which we care about, but they have financial benefits as well for everyone in the Town of Barnstable. We've all six just literally come from a regional energy committee meeting sponsored by the Cape Light Compact, in which we were collaborating with other towns' energy committees. It's a little embarrassing to have to leave to literally defend the existence of our committee to the other 15 towns who all have energy committees. We learned at this meeting that, we know there's already four green communities on the Cape. There's six other towns actively moving forward towards green communities, so it's not as if we're like the only town doing this. I think it's 70% of the state's population now lives in a community that's a green community. So, we've accomplished a lot. We're happy, I'm happy to step down. I don't need to waste my time in the meeting room, spinning my wheels on all of these things if nobody wants to listen to it, but I haven't seen a lot of leadership in this room on these kinds of issues, and I think we play an important role on kind of driving energy efficiency issues forward for our town.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Chris Gagne. I'm from an organization called Cannabis Community Care and Research Network. I would like to first start out, and we do a lot of advocacy work around the state, and thank you to this panel right here, for you guys, for the work that, in detail that you've put into this topic, for this town moving forward. I grew up in the town of Barnstable. I, in Marston's Mills, I went to Barnstable High School, graduated in 1996, and I'm one of those people that left Cape Cod. And I'm one of those people that left Cape Cod. But I am in the fortunate position that I am passionate about, about this topic. I've lost a lot of friends over the years to the opioid epidemic here in, on Cape Cod. I'm kind of, I think everyone else, everyone in this room is a little tired of getting that phone call or scrolling through Facebook and seeing that someone that we grew up with, or a son, or a brother, is gone now. And there's, there's solutions out there. And, and the cannabis industry is part of that solution, we believe. On top of that, and here in the town of Barnstable, there's a group that I work with. We are, our offices in Boston, we're actually all currently looking to buy homes here on Cape Cod. We're parents, we have children, and Barnstable is an ideal place for us to move, along with a lot of the people that we meet in this industry that are looking to open businesses associated with the cannabis industry here on Cape Cod, especially here in the town of Barnstable. There is, the town is set up where, you know, over in Independence Park, there's zoning for medical facilities, and I'm learning as much as I can, as fast as possible, about what this town's doing and what the direction it's going in with this business. But I think that it is a good thing for the town of Barnstable. I think it is a good thing for the town, for the residents, for the, to better quality of life. And the economic benefits that come along with that are amazing. So, thank you very much for your time, and thank you again for all of you for taking the time to research and be educated on the topic as this vote comes forward. Oh, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Chris Clark from West Barnstable. I had this meeting on my calendar to pitch our 11th Annual West Barnstable Flag Day Celebration, which will be next Thursday, June 14th, on Flag Day at 6:00 PM at the Meeting House Farm on 149 in West Barnstable. We've been having this ceremony to honor the flag and to execute a proper protocol, or by proper protocol, a retirement, flag retirement ceremony put on by the West Barnstable Fire Department. This, all are welcome to this short, short festivity, whether you have a flag or not. And the West Barnstable Fire Department will accept flags for this ceremony and throughout the year if you cannot attend but have a flag to retire. So although I had planned to be here to discuss our Flag Day and Flag Retirement Ceremony, I read your agenda to see that the Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee is proposed for retirement as well. As a member of the LAPC since its inception in 2005, I had hoped that our meetings' inputs were valued and that we contributed to the quality of life in Barnstable. Our committee has been faithful to its mission as it was set out by a previous town council. Recently, we reviewed the town's open space and recreation plan, spending hours on its review and suggesting many meaningful edits. We also regularly review conservation restrictions, making recommendations to your council. Members of the Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee have spearheaded walking weekends in the spring and fall to showcase our town's pathways through our open spaces. We've also contacted town staff and worked with AmeriCorps to maintain those trails when they needed attention. We acted on an important element of the 2010 Open Space and Recreation Plan, making recommendations of parcels for acquisition as they relate to municipal water supplies after visiting each of our town's water districts, at the same time preserving the town's negotiating power. Finally, in accordance with our charge, a member of our committee has served on the towns, as a town's representative on the Santuit Preserve Management Committee. Phyllis Miller of Santuit has served faithfully in that role, informing the town's property and risk management director of problems, and working to get Barnstable in compliance with the Land Management Agreement for Santuit Pond Preserve that was signed in 2003 by then Barnstable Assistant Town Manager Joe Ellen Daly. It spells out our obligations with this joint ownership of open space with the town of Mashpee. So if the Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee no longer serves the citizenry, then who do you see will take on these tasks? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, councilors. My name's Henry Farnham from West Barnstable, and I just wanted to remind you that next weekend is Father's Day, and it is the 24th Annual Father's Day Car Show. And we have actually two shows this year. On Saturday night, we close, we'll close down Main Street from High School Road West, and have a show there on Saturday night. And then Sunday morning, we close Main Street at 6:00 AM, and the show will run from 8:30 to 2:30. We expect a sellout. We already have pretty close to a sellout, 350 show cars. And typically, we get anywhere from 60,000 to 70,000 people that come to this event throughout the day. So I just hope that you all get a chance to make it. It's a really great event, and it's free to everybody except those who have a car on the show. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any councillor respond to public comment? Councillor Beedenbender?
Thank you. We will talk more about this later during the agenda, but I just, I wanted to thank Steve Luciani for coming forward. I don't know where he went. And, and yes, there are many of us who enjoy those signs on a daily basis. I go through that intersection every single day, a couple times a day. But, but here's the rub. We have rules, and, and the challenge is, is that if you allow one, as, as innocuous as it may seem, then you have to start allowing anyone else who comes forward, because now you have no baseline. You have no standard that you're upholding all the time. So as much as I'm, I was sorry to see those signs go, we, we have rules that we have to uphold and hold them equally to all citizens. Which ties into what, and I apologize, I don't remember your last name, but Mary Ann, the, the woman who was so articulate about talking about the police department and Chief McDonald, about that equality of justice across the board. And, and to her, I just want to say that I think you can rest assured, we have, we have a wonderful police department, and we have some, we had wonderful candidates. And the individual who is going to be confirmed tonight, I can, you can rest assured that following Chief McDonald's footsteps and following his example, you can, you can feel confident that we will continue to build community and look out for all of our citizens. To Allison and the Renewable Energy Committee, we will say more on this later, I promise you. But I do want to thank you all for coming tonight. I think it was, it's, it's great to see all of you out there, and we will have further discussion on this. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councillor Dagwone?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to thank Mrs. Barbosa, who came tonight and spoke about Chief McDonald and his services, and the way that he's worked with our community in particular, and very closely with our community. Her son and several other gentlemen of a little group. We on it last year because they came out and had a unity day, which was to bring the community together and with the police department. All around the country, we were noticing that we had a lot of young men of color that were clashing with police officers. And they didn't want to see that happen in Barnstable, in Hyannis. And that was the thrust of their unity day, and they reached out to the police department and came together and had a, a beautiful day out there. This is, I think they had their second one last year. The third one is coming up this year in August. I was trying to get a, a specific date, but I think it's going to be the first Friday in August, I do believe. I also want to thank Laurie Carley and Kathy Durant for coming out tonight, speaking on behalf of their community. There, there could have been at least 20 other people here that are being affected by this. And I think they both spoke very elegantly, very detailed about the leaching field. I walk that area all the time, Laurie Street and around the area, and I have noticed the flooding as they, as they've spoken about. The pond, which now is turning to almost a lake. And I think we really need to address that flooding, that flooding issue. Property values is a big thing for all of us. That's our investment. And I think a lot of times, we have to put ourselves in other people's places to really understand how they're feeling and what the effect they're having right now. So I'm hoping that, and I know the town manager has been very open to this, and so I hope you still will work with him closely in addressing the issue, and hopefully we can find another place for the leaching, besides our high school fields. So I wanted to speak about that. The bid, I think I want to know a little bit more about the bid. I'm, you know, concerned, it started out as a, a wonderful idea. But you have people who, I heard tonight, have been there, you know, been on Main Street for 30, 40 years. And that says something. When they, they step up and they speak, there's, there's something wrong. And so I think we need to listen to them and come to some agreement around that, that those who want to stay in, stay in. It's hard to be forced to do something you don't want to do. And, and if nothing else, try to improve the benefits. They, they're feeling as though they're not getting any benefit for the money that they're paying. So hopefully, that's something can be looked into as well. And thank you for coming and informing us.
Councillor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, we are so blessed in this town with the quality of all of our citizens who participate, who think, who express themselves, and we desperately need that to continue. So that gets us onto the committees. It's okay to review committees, but I think we have to be a little bit more open and transparent and talk to the committees about what your needs are in order to make your committees work and function well. So it's kind of a shout-out at the same time to the general public that if they don't support our committees and work with our committees, then they become kind of exercises of waste of time. So certainly, that is not the case, or what we just heard from Allison's presentation. So this is the, tonight will be the first reading, which means that it'll be open for public comment at our next meeting. So please, I hope that all committees that are being mentioned tonight rally their forces and come out and, and talk and express, as well as Allison did tonight, about the value of your hard, hard work. This town could not, in my estimation, continue to function at the high level it does without the participation of so many wonderful citizens participating. There will be a lot more discussion about the fields and the water. We talk about house values. My big concern when I went down to visit was, can people keep living down there much longer if this water's going to keep going up? So we're talking about, if we add to that, and we're responsible for adding to that, then somebody's going to be willing to buy your houses to protect you because it's just deplorable at the end of that street. I was shocked. So, thank you again.
Any other councilors? Councillor Tinsley?
Just to, thank you, just to reiterate what Councillor Hebert said, is, is that tonight for the, the commissions, it's the first reading, so there'll be no vote, so please, two weeks from tonight, come back out. I also wanted to thank Ms. Clark. I once asked up here where I could, I visited several places where we could, where we could properly dispose of an American flag, so I got that this evening, so thank you. And I wanted to thank Mr. Farnham, because I didn't have time to get home and get my, my car like you used to always have up here, because I've been going to the Father's Day Car Show. I think it was the eighth or ninth annual my youngest daughter brought me, and it's amazing. I encourage everybody to come out. And it's surprisingly, knock on some wood, it's, it's generally always good weather, and it's just such a great time. Please come down. I encourage you all. Thank you.
Councillor Raffa Crissetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to belabor the issue with regard to the MOU, and I, I, what concerns me is Mr. Rand's comment that there's a hydrant sitting underwater, and I think we have the fire chief from Hyannis here, and I, I'm not sure, maybe we don't have the fire chief. Oh, yeah, oh, there he is. So I know that the fire department has pumps, and I, I think for, for public safety, I think that fire hydrant should be pumped clear and made clear for, for the residents of the area, if that's possible. I don't even know if it's possible, but, but I see that.
Any other councilors? Vice President Crocker?
Yes, thank you. Clearly, we had five people speak of a lien that was placed against their real estate from the bid process. I would just ask the manager that we present them with a letter of how we arrived at this conclusion, and so then they have a clear understanding of why a lien was put on their property, and if they choose to dispute it, they should. But if nobody has been given proper notice of, or has not, has been given notice in the past, but a lien came forward, and now they feel they haven't been given proper notice, I would say that we have an obligation to again assert proper notice of the issue that created the lien environment. And then if they choose to appeal it or, or take action against it, they should have a clear understanding of why the town believes they have, have the right to lien the real estate. But that's something I think everybody deserves to have in writing. Thank you very much.
Any other councilors? All right, we're going to move on to Town Manager Communications. Town Manager Markell's. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, Markell's Town Manager. I'll start with the last question first. We would be more than happy to review the process, what role the town plays in it, and communicate back to, you know, any and all who have questions relevant to this. Conversations have been going back and forth for a while, but it was made also clear to me by one of the commenters that they wanted something conclusive. So I will coordinate that with our legal department, with our tax collector, and also discussions with the bid, because I think there's perhaps confusion or even disagreement on the role of the town in this. And I'll be more than happy to write that up, share it with all of you, and share it with those who had comment tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I? The issue really is about long-spanning discussion, arguments, understandings of rights, switching of real estate. Whatever all of that is, we took a position when we leaned the property. And I do believe that if we are being forthright, we need to now present that final position that led to the lien, and let them choose to appeal it or to understand, at least understand the position of the town. So thank you very much. It's just a clarity issue because of the length of time of this issue.
Maybe the town attorney, I think she has a comment she wants to make.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody. I confirm that that lien was not placed on the property by the town. It was a lien placed on the bid. They have the authority under the bid statute, I think it's MGL Chapter 40O, to place liens, so it was not a lien placed by the town on the property.
Mr. President? That leads us to how do we protect our, our constituent base? So what is it that we can do as a town to describe to those people why this has occurred to them through a initiative that originally begun in these chambers and now is a entity that has been empowered by this chamber? So how do we wade into the discussion, just so we have clarity for our constituent base?
It's, it's an excellent question, and thank you for it. The way the bid statute is structured, once the legislative body makes the vote to authorize the bid, the town has really, pardon me, ministerial functions. The tax collector processes the bills, and that really, statutorily, is really the scope of the town's function periodically in this address. There was a correction made in May of 2013, when it was discovered that several of the properties that might have appeared on a map did not have frontage on Main Street, but had frontage on South Street. So there was a correction made. So periodically, because tax-exempt properties aren't taxable under the bid, and there are certain properties, so that will change over time depending who owns it. So the town's involvement is just to make sure that the properties that are taxed by the bid continue to comply with the requirements that were imposed by the council in their vote on May 13, 1999. On the issue of opting out, the law changed. My conversation with one of the previous speakers was a discussion of an assertion that the map contained a property, but the description was at odds with it. And legally, the words control. If you have a description that is at odds with the map, it would be the words that control. And the town council's vote was clear as to why properties are contained. The town has no control over a change in the law that prospectively affects the bid. So the town would have no ability, under the current state of the law, to address those people that now, who initially opted out, and now, based on a change in the law that happened probably five years ago. So that's the status of the bid. But again, under the statute, the town has little involvement in the oversight and running of the bid.
Mr. President? I know this is very difficult for you, and you're a technocrat, so I get all that. But these are our constituents. This is a process that began in this chamber. We have fingerprints on it because we collect funds. We need to answer the question. So I don't care if you ask the bid for a definition of how these happened and then inform them so they have the right, but people have come before this chamber and asked us for our help and clarity. And the only thing we may be able to provide is leadership. And the leadership is, let me tell you how it happened. And if you disagree, the court's an alternative, you have all your rights available to you. But if somebody comes here and talking about an instrument that was created by this esteemed group, then, not today's group, but the esteemed group previous to this one, then we have an obligation to help them. We jumped on with a number of people for windmills, we jump on private roads issue, we do joint ventures with towns everywhere, and now we've got something that was created by this very body, and we're not going to at least assist them in identifying where the fault or where the issue's solved so that they have clarity there? I'm not going to accept that easily.
And I'm sorry if I misspoke, but all I was saying, that wasn't a town lien. I thought that the initial assumption was that a town lien.
Yes, and that's part one of the clarity. Thank you very much. That's part one of the clarity. Everybody in here thought it was a town lien. I did. Now we know that. So that's part one. That's the clarity they deserve. They need to know where to take their fight, and they need to know when they came to us for help, that we were there to help them. And that's what this is going to be. And that's what I'm asking of you. If it's a problem, I'll be glad to talk to you off mic and see what we can handle.
Let's take the rest of it offline and do the research and get, I think we know what we need to provide, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Well, it's not really an agenda item, we're just, I don't want to get too far into having discussion on the bid tonight because it's not on the agenda. I'm not going to allow it right now, I'm sorry. Mark?
Good evening. Markell's Town Manager. We're proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY 2019 is scheduled in accordance with Section 6.2 of the Town Charter. We've submitted that budget, it's online, and we continue our discussion on the operating budget tonight. We've continued working with Mass Fish and Wildlife, USGS, Department of Environmental Protection, Water Supply regarding future potential water supply wells proposed on the 250-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis water system. The USGS has commenced model runs in the area of the Hyannis Pond Complex. I actually saw some of the modelers today and were discussing making sure that we're going to have a group meeting very shortly here because they're close to doing the actual physical runs, and we want to make sure all the assumptions that are being input are correct and agreed to by all the parties. DEP actually was somewhat of a disappointment in not being able to pull the samples for us to do the water quality testing. So through me, to DPW, to the Water Supply Division, they've ordered all, you know, sampling bottles, and we're planning on pulling those samples ourselves next week. So they fell behind. They couldn't give us a schedule by which they would have that work complete. I think it's about $8,500 worth of work, so it wasn't really a monetary issue, it was more, they had offered to do it, they said they had the certified labs. But I believe for scheduling reasons, they're not holding with their schedule, so we don't want to wait. We thought it would have been done two weeks ago. So we've proceeded with that. We are going to have a full group meeting, again, as I've said, to make sure going into the modeling portion of this, that everybody understands the assumptions and we're in agreement with those assumptions. We continue our discussion with Vineyard Wind relative to their proposal to construct transmission facility that would interconnect with the proposed offshore wind farm in federal waters. I continued to meet, or I continue to meet with Vineyard Wind to develop a host agreement. Here in Barnstable, we've met weekly. The ball's in my court, I've got a draft deliverable for a host agreement, second round, back to them. So I'm trying to get it done this week and get it back to them. If I don't, it'll be the first of next week. But we continue to discuss this. You probably all know, and I've included in your Town Manager Report, the press release that they were selected to negotiate these contracts to deliver the offshore wind. So they did get that. And so this is real now. We are proceeding with a host agreement. They still have three locations. They were scheduled to do their boring down at Colville's Beach today because they are looking, given some of the concerns we have about siting of a substation, the fluids that are used within those substations, the relationship of those substations to public water supply, that they may want to come in through Colville's and not through Yarmouth. So we're having very active discussions with them about their proposed routing. Their current plan actually has three routes in. So this isn't deviating from what they've proposed, it's just they're trying to refine it to a point where they know exactly what they're proposing to do. So we continue to work with them, and I expect that we will continue along those lines. The town is coordinating with the Friends of Barnstable Harbor on a Benthic Habitat mapping project. Starting in May, the Center for Coastal Studies is mapping Barnstable Harbor, including the outer flats out to the Bell Buoy. Sometime in July and August, they will take 100-plus Benthic grab samples that will be sifted through and species counted to create a science-based biological and physiological snapshot of the harbor, providing important data for decisions regarding the future of the harbor. As recent as last week, they were coordinating, our harbor masters coordinating with them, making sure when they have boats come in, come and go, that we're working with them so they have a place to come and go from. I know that this is important information, long-term, as we move forward with better understanding the Barnstable Harbor system. And so I expect that this will probably grow into a long-term relationship. And at this point, it's Friends of Barnstable Harbor, though, that have funded the majority of this, and I believe moving forward, they may want to have, I know they've talked to Councilor Flores, but I believe that they may want to see appropriate participation from us or from us helping them obtain other funding from outside sources. So very positive relationship, and we appreciate them reaching out to us. I've attached a flyer for Free Summer Lunch Program at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center, Monday through Friday, starting June 25 through August 24, with lunches served from 12:00 to 12:45, and snack, actually, it's from 3:00 to 3:30, but I just put 3:00 here. So Patty Machado wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that's in the works, and, you know, her staff and some of our community partners assist with that. So it's a wonderful program, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it. On May 31, I had the opportunity to participate in One Love. This was a workshop organized by our youth commission to provide Barnstable High School seniors with the tools to recognize the warning signs of relationship abuse, to understand the difference between healthy and unhealthy relationship behavior, and to learn ways to safely intervene to help others. The family of Yardley Love, a senior at the University of Virginia who was beaten to death by her ex-boyfriend just weeks short of graduation, created the foundation to educate as many young people as possible about the warning signs of relationship abuse and encourage everybody to speak up and act when they witness signs of an abusive relationship. I want to thank all involved, but specifically Matt McCauley from Barnstable Youth Commission, Claire Gi, I think it's Gi Petroni, sorry. Claire Gi Petroni, she's the Boston Regional Engagement Coordinator for the One Love Foundation and the Cape and Islands DA Office. If you'd like to find out, this isn't a one-time effort, this is the beginnings of continued communication on this and many other issues. It shows the leadership of our youth commission, the engagement of our staff and our community. It was a sobering but very positive opportunity to engage our youth in a very adult discussion, and they engaged. And I would encourage any and all from our community to reach out to Patty. It was very interesting that, you know, the rep from Boston, the coordinator from Boston, went back to New York and told them that she hadn't been to a session that had so many different members of a community involved. So that speaks volumes to Barnstable's commitment, certainly to working with its youth, and our leadership from our youth commission, all the members. They did a great job, and it was well worth the effort. I attended the school committee last evening to address questions regarding appropriation order 2018-064 for the funding of the Barnstable Public School High School Sport Field Upgrade Project relative to the requirement that a memorandum for subsurface effluent disposal be entered into between the town manager and the superintendent before said funding can be encumbered or expended. We discussed at length the draft MOU. I put another copy, as well as your vote, on that particular item in your package. An agreement to continue to work together toward a final MOU for the next school committee meeting in July. And I'll keep you advised of our progress on this matter. I think many of the concerns that were brought here were expressed by more members of the committee from that area. I have two observations. The school committee and those in the audience were very patient with my long explanation of water and wastewater and trying to manage these issues in our community, and that we need to look at any and all options, and we are looking at any and all. And as projects are brought forward to us, especially projects like fields and parking lots, we are going to go through an evaluation process to see if it makes sense to cite effluent discharge under those facilities. That doesn't mean that it will happen, but it doesn't mean that the conclusion might not be that it is feasible and that we should maintain that option. And because of the timing of the project, I think that many of our residents felt like, well, this is going to happen and we don't want it to happen here. Rightfully so, because I believe that's how they received the information. In looking at Dunn's Pond Road area, I have two major comments. I did share with them that the preliminary findings that we've had, even though without an MOU, we really, you know, we really shouldn't be going on school property and going too far down a road without establishing a memorandum of understanding, saying, we're going to do that, and here's the steps, and here's where it might lead. But we've already looked at the new baseball field with the artificial turf and the depth that you need to have a drainage structure, subsurface, and then where groundwater is. And our initial findings are that we wouldn't put effluent there. What we haven't done is looked at the rest of the site, which is significant. We need to do that. That's what the memorandum of understanding will do. One of the conclusions could be that we should go to the next step, which is not just a preliminary evaluation, but a very specific evaluation to determine whether we want to propose to put effluent discharge at that site. If it's found that that's appropriate, then we would want to proceed to siting effluent discharge there. Our evaluation is not limited to this site, it is every single site in town where this could potentially be an option. Concurrent with this, we're also looking at every single site where we might need to cite future potential water supply, so that long-term, we don't end up in a situation where we've placed one or the other in a situation that doesn't allow us to best manage either of those, you know, the resource of the water or the requirement upon us that we have to treat wastewater and we have to dispose of it somewhere. So this is, you know, way out in front of what's being done, but it is what it is. We certainly offered to the school committee that they set the timeframe, we would walk through this, or we can run through it, depending on the timeframe that they want to move forward with this project. The other part of what I would want to do, and I've already talked to the DPW, whether we ever do this or not, and it doesn't sound like it would go into the first phase, it may be proposed for further evaluation and maybe ultimately looked at to go there under the second and third phase, which the school has said they are going to go forward with, is we need to work with these residents on this issue. I mean, it's okay to pump it perhaps temporarily, but they've, from the sounds of it, they've got a much bigger issue out there that is getting worse for some reason. Certainly, this year, this is a high groundwater year, maybe it's hit this two or three times in the last 60 years. So this is an extreme example, but what they're describing, I think probably under lesser high water, lesser high groundwater conditions is still problematic. So we need to be in there, and we need to be working with them on this issue, and I've already asked DPW to do that. And I asked DPW because they're the ones who typically evaluate this sort of an issue for us and really begin to scope it out and say, okay, this is what we need to be looking at doing. So that's where we are. We're going to go back to school committee, we'll continue to work with them. If at the end of the day, they don't want to do a memorandum of understanding, I have informed them that the appropriation order says they have to, or else they don't have the money. So that would mean that they would come back to you for some potential modification. I'm going to meet with the superintendent about this on Monday morning, lay out a path, we'll recommend she to the, she to the school committee, myself to the leadership on how we should proceed. We will certainly share that and then make a decision how to move forward. So it was a very good meeting, and I hope it was beneficial. I hope our residents know that they're heard and how this all fits into a bigger process. And there will be, you know, there is nothing of greater priority than public health and safety for our residents. So that's, I said that last night, I say it again, that's what we're here for. So this will be done in a very thoughtful and certainly regulatory and, you know, regulatory-appropriate manner. It's a very regulatory, you know, intensive process to even consider effluent discharge. One item I didn't put here before I asked Ian Quirk to come up, and I'll be done after I state this, and then Ian can come up, and she wanted to share with you information regarding some proposed new locations for elections. I have gone forward with the Special Events on Town Property Procedure Guidebook, as I have given you in draft. We have finalized it. It will be go-active tomorrow, and so we are proceeding with this. And my office will still coordinate the applications that come in. regarding some proposed new locations for elections. I have gone forward with the special events on town property procedure guidebook as I have given you in draft. We have finalized it. It will be, go active tomorrow, and so we are proceeding with this. And my office will still coordinate the, the applications that come in and Elizabeth Harts Grove is going to be helping us as we move through it. It's not a substantial change. There are some new things in there that I pointed out to you previously, but I just wanted you to have a copy. This will all be web-based. All of the applications will go in that direction as well. Ultimately, we'll, we want to be able to take the fees online, et cetera, so we're trying to modernize all of this. We expect to have some of the basics up this month. So I'll keep you advised as we progress on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to do questions first and then we'll go to the town clerk? Okay. Any questions for the town manager? Councilor Hebert?
So I've always been known as a counselor that sees himself looking at the whole town and I will continue to do that, but this, this thing at the school and Dunn Pond Road is in my precinct. And so I'm not going to pull a Moby Dick on this and I'm not going to get tied into going down with the whale, but it is really frightening and I know that you know that, Mark, and, and it's very sad and for the people that live on that street and so. My, my hope is that, so water is rising. We know that. And now they're looking at municipalities and monies to help us to get ready for the contingency of the rising water everywhere, not just in the, on the ocean, but underneath the ground. The water's coming up. So we have to look at how we're going to handle all this water, what we're going to do it. So I know that the space station, they can't bring enough water up there, so they, they treat their, their waste to the point that they drink the water. So I'm just wondering, I hope that we can also look at the technology of what's coming up, that we, there might be some technologies out there that we don't have to pump the water into our ground, that we actually treat it and end up maybe reusing it in a very efficient way. And I know that if any, anybody's aware of that, it would be yourself and, and Dan Santos. So I rely on, on your good leadership to make sure that we do the right technology to solve this problem. So I thank you for your leadership.
We are looking at any and all technologies, both on the water supply side and on the wastewater side, and you're right, this issue will continue to get more complex, especially as the ability to test those standards or, or the ability to identify contamination begins to, or continues to drop from, you know, parts per million to parts per billion to parts per trillion. Where we're at now, parts per trillion, they are even talking about dropping the PFOS standard further from .07 to .01 parts per trillion. And then as we gather this information and better understand the impacts of it, you see advisories coming about, and I think there's probably about 80 being looked at now, but there's as many, I, I think there's hundreds being listed. So not only do we have the current issues that we've been talking about for the last decade or two, but now we have this whole challenge of emerging contaminants, both in our water supply, but also in the wastewater that we dispose of. And when we use the word wastewater, a lot of people jump to the thought of, well, a treatment plant with, but everybody has wastewater. And the products that we use are, contain these emerging contaminants. And when we're able to test them to trace amounts and they're able to link those trace amounts to effects or potential effects, then it becomes an individual onsite issue for all of us. And so that's the degree that we're trying to look at this, understanding it. I think a lot of it will be discussions and education of our public about this issue and they're going to have to, as consumers, make decisions. Either avoid using it or you pay for it later is really where this is going. Never mind nutrients, which comes from our urine primarily, or some of the other challenges that we have, like high groundwater in somebody's, you know, backyard or sounds like basements and into their homes. That's a whole nother issue about not being able to get rid of your wastewater. So we're looking at all of it and we'll bring forward that information regularly here in the public. And if you're not getting it, ask because we are actively doing this. If you're not getting information, then we're not doing our job communicating. So let us know, please.
If I may, also wherever we see a problem, we can also see an opportunity. So we have been talking about what kind of industries we could bring to Cape Cod, to Barnstable in particular, that would create jobs, meaningful jobs. So I look at this right now as a laboratory. So all the research that we can put into bringing companies that, that use us as a kind of a test place to come and create the equipment, the technology and the services so that we become a prime example of what communities can do to solve problems and put us ahead of everybody else. I think this is an opportunity that we should take advantage of.
Well, I think the award that Dan Santos announced last, announced last meeting illustrates that the state of Massachusetts recognizes the town of Barnstable for its leadership, and that was a water supply award. And if you go back to our history, I think that's been the case many times. And I think that though these are difficult issues financially and, you know, just community issues, we always try to bring everybody together and come to the best solution and we'll continue to do that.
Counselor Rapacek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for your report. I'm happy to see in the MOU, the, the encumbrances could be discharged or it could be released if found that the field is not compatible for effluent discharge.
Yes.
Just so the residents of that area know that that's it provided in here. How many days from signing the MOU do you expect the study to be complete? And who is?
Well, the MOU is for the entire parcel. We already have the technical paper that says we're not going to put effluent under the baseball field, but it's for the entire parcel because we need to evaluate that. Because if, 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 I mean, we wouldn't ask if we didn't want to evaluate the location.
Absolutely.
One of the outcomes may be that we go to the design permitting phase and we would think that it is feasible at that time to cite some amount of effluent under some portion of those fields. And the MOU says, if we, if, if that's confirmed, you go to the next step, to the next step, right through construction.
Right.
That takes years. They want to open bids, you know, I'm sorry, they want to, they want to design and go to bid soon on this first phase. We don't want to be in a position for phase two without having done this and then rush into it again. We're going to focus on the entire site. We're going to do a preliminary evaluation, similar to what we've already done. If the conclusion is you don't proceed there, it stops. And this is what the MOU spells, spells out. What the school committee was asking though, really, really deviated from the intent of the MOU. They wanted the MOU just to be to study it with no commitment. If the finding is to proceed to subsequent phases, they want, you know, so, so they have the money and then they'd study it and then we give them an answer and then they'd say yes or no. That's not what we, that's not what this town council agreed to with that appropriation order. So they would need to come back and modify if that's what, if that's what they wish to do.
And we're only looking at subsurface, not at vertigation?
We're just looking at, we're looking at subsurface discharge, so below the ground. And actually, they were the model for this. They've had them for 20 years out at BUES and, and the, the elementary school in the Mills. And it's worked very well, very safe, completely compliant. We couldn't do it unless it's, unless it meets all the criteria of state law relevant to effluent discharge and public safety. So nor could we continue to do it if that were the case. But, you know, so, so we really need to get to, and I think the immediate discussion is, do you just not want to do this now? And that's one discussion. Or do we try to logically go through step by step and keep the MOU in place? And that would be the first discussion we'll have on Monday morning. And then from there, we'll come forward with a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. And just to Counselor Hebert's comment about the space station drinking their water or their wastewater, I mean, it's absolutely doable, it's just extremely costly. So I don't think we're there yet.
Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark, for your report. Just a clarification on the summer lunch program. Is that a drop-in program or do families have to register their kids?
It would be good to call, I don't thi, it would be good for them to know numbers ahead of time. So we're directing them to Mark Boardley at the HYCC and the, his telephone number and his email are there. But I think they take any and all, but it helps to know ahead of time how many are coming.
Okay. Thank you. But one other question, not in your report today, but we're in the open period for the RFP that was let out for the Kmart Plaza. Can you give me a quick status of the level of interest in that? And I think there's an upcoming meeting in June, right?
I'm going to ask the Assistant Town Manager to come up and do that. Thank you.
Good evening. Andy Kleiberg, Assistant Town Manager. David Anthony is here to answer any specific questions that I can't. We do have a public information hearing on the 25th of this month. Currently, the RFP is out on the street. We're advertising, we're in the stages of working with the airport on developing our evaluation team moving forward, but the 25th is the next key date and the date, August 31st is when the bids are due. We've had a couple requests for information, correct, David? Just about existing facilities, but that's about it at this point.
All right. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Counselor Beedenbender? Hi there. This is for Mark Gels. Thank you for your report. I just wanted to just say something about the One Love or ask you a question. So I'm the very proud mother of a graduating senior girl and always very concerned about healthy relationships. And so this is a wonderful program and I don't know what the parameters of the foundation are as far as who, who can partake in this. I would suggest that very much like marriages, which should have marriage counseling at the beginning of the marriage as opposed to the end when it's in a muck, that we, our, our kids are in relationships often multiple times by the time senior year rolls around. I remember my daughter, when she was in eighth grade, telling me about a number of her classmates who were already having sex. So I, if there is any way for the Youth Commission to do this even at a younger age where it can have an impact earlier, I would recommend that and to ask for that. Thanks.
Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, good report as usual. I just want to comment on the Bentec Habitat Mapping Project. That is an ongoing process with, with the Center for Coastal Studies. You're correct, they have received some grants to have that funded, but as it moves forward, I know that they will be looking for support probably from the town somehow, somewhere. So we should be able to think about that from a budgetary perspective, perhaps not for FY19 unless we can find some available funds, but definitely for FY20 because this will be an incredibly valuable service as we look at really the ecology of Barnstable Harbor and how it moves forward and how we protect it. And towards that end, the Friends of Barnstable Harbor will be having a meeting coming up on June 14th and it's basically focusing on where does the stormwater slash wastewater go? You know, how does it infiltrate the marshland? How does it go into the harbor? That's going to be free of charge and it's going to be at Tales of Cape Cod. So anybody who might be watching tonight who might want to see that is welcome. Seven o'clock on, on June 14th, talking about stormwater. Also, I'm sure we'll be talking about Bentec Habitat Mapping and for those, the folks that don't understand Bentec Habitat Mapping, it really looks at the surface, if you will, of the ocean and looks at the shapes, the curves, the animals, the crustaceans, everything that's there so that as we plan for the future, we have a sense of what we're dealing with. Especially because we have a very viable oyster industry, if you will, a farming cultivation, cultivation industry on that part of, on that part of Barnstable as well as we do on the south side. Thank you.
Vice President Crocker?
Thank you. Could we go over the fish and wildlife game issue again? We originally thought that the samples were going to be collected from us from existing wells. And now we're in a position that they have not advanced that for us, but we've gotten permission to collect them ourselves. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
And who's, who is the owner of the wells and do we know the depth of the wells?
We have all that information. I think it's a combination from USGS wells that have been there.
And how many samples are we going to draw, or how many wells are available for us to sample?
I'll, I'll get all that data. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Do we have any available funds if we need to push any additional well locations versus?
Yes.
Yeah, terrific.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Yeah, we really.
Yes.
We really need this break.
It was a little disappointing that they weren't going to meet the schedule that they originally committed to, but it, it sounds like a scheduling issue and we just, we, we did not want to wait till some date in the future.
Well, I applaud your effort to get past that and on to the next phase, which is still collecting the water by whatever means necessary.
Yeah, I spoke with Hans today about it and it's just a matter of the bottles are being shipped and as soon as we get them, we'll proceed.
Thank you. And I think what's important about that is that's the whole discussion in a way of what the MOU is at the high school. In some way, when we talk about groundwater, whether we're discharging in it or whether we're taking from it, it's a lengthy permitting process with science everywhere, with PEs, with everyone. We've had people come forward talking about the issue of the MOU on the school grounds and it's difficult for us to talk about because it's just a theory. We don't even know which way the water travels there until our tests are complete. So the idea that it may come to their, to their yard is, could be completely wrong from the way the water flows without the proper testing. And I applaud that you took the time to go in and try to explain that to them and it's not an easy explain. And when people come to us, we're always here to try to help, as, as I explained earlier, with people who have had action taken against them, when they had a action against their property as far as a lien. This substantive idea though, that people should derail the good and proper management of testing these areas before we cement over them, it's a different rub altogether. I know that my comments about getting to the bottom for the people who had a lien against them is going to make some people feel that I should get to the bottom of them on another issue. But if the issues are good property and sound management, which we're getting from your office, we have a professional manager there and we're very grateful to have you and Andy at the helm and as well as DPW, we have a professional PE. That effort has to go the course before we know. And we all know that we can't get a permit if we don't meet certain criteria for the state. So I applaud that you've already told them that we've tested one area, it's not suitable, so that's not going to happen, but now we're continuing to do the appropriate thing. So thank you. It's a difficult task when people are, have a misunderstanding of the information. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mark. And the town clerk, the town clerk would like to come up with some information? Welcome in.
Good evening, councilors. It's funny to be on this side. As many of you know, I've chatted with lots of you, we've had an issue with elections being held in schools. Do I really need to do that? I'm kind of loud. The school committee came to me about a year and a half ago and asked me to get out of the schools as soon as possible for elections. And I've talked to many of you, trying to figure out how we're going to do this and where we're going to go. Well, we have found two places so that we can move the 1012 precinct out of the BUE school and that we can move the precinct one out of Barnstable, West Barnstable. And it is all about the safety of the children. So I just wanted to bring that forward to you. I'm kind of excited. It's taken a while, but we've gotten that far and it will probably come before you on the next agenda. Okay? Any questions?
You don't have a teaser or anything or?
Yes, I could tell you that we've spoken with the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which is located in Marston's Mills, right on Route 28. They have a brand-new community building that is fabulous and they have been very receptive to helping us out and being good neighbors and being a part of this. So that's one location and that would be for the 1012 precinct. The other location is, again, a beautiful location. It's located on- It's located on Attix Lane. It's within Precinct 1's boundaries, and it is the Zion Union Church. They have an enormous lobby, and both are ADA compliant, which is the biggest issue for us. So, they're very happy to have us there. They've been excellent to deal with, so I'm kinda looking forward to this whole thing coming together.
Great, thank you. Counselor Flores.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ann, for that information. So, you're telling us now that there will be no voting presence in any of the public schools in Barnstable?
Correct.
That... Okay, fine. My second question is, from a public relations perspective, what is the planned strategy so that those folks from the various precincts that will be moving to new locations will have that knowledge in plenty of time, know exactly where they're going, know exactly how to get there, so that there's no confusion?
Oh, well, I have to follow the Mass General laws on that, and I have a certain time limit to get everybody notified. So, that will be done by postcard to all of my voters in all the precincts involved. And we're gonna put it on the TV, and we're gonna put it on the slides, and I will go out anywhere to talk to anyone that wants to listen to me about this.
So, with the primary election slated for September 4th...
Mm-hmm.
And the general election slated for November 6th, how far be... How far before September 4th does that have to occur?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days.
But as long as you folks vote on it at the next town council meeting, my plan is the following week those postcards are going out.
Because I think it's critical that folks know where they need to go to vote.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we will have people at the old locations directing them to the new locations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Vice President Crocker.
With the change of locations, are we also gonna broadcast the way you intend to handle early voting?
Ah, that hasn't been decided yet. So, it's still... It's... The House did not pass it.
Oh.
It passed in the Senate, did not pass in the House, because it was... There was no money attached to it. And the letter worked, I guess, with a lot of town clerks wrote letters to their representative asking for help, because that really puts a strain on our town. So, we asked for, if they're going to go forward with it, please give us the infrastructure and the money to do this. So, it kind of has stopped at the moment.
Do we have the ability, though, to perhaps notify our constituent base when we tell them of a change, that the other option is always still voting here and give them some basic guidelines?
Absolutely. We're also gonna have them... I wanna get together with the senior center one more time and talk about absentee balloting, because it is there for everyone. So, that's definitely a part of what we do on every election.
Yeah. Well, you got a big job, and the state's not helping you, so I'm wishing you well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Flores?
Good question. Can you confirm when the early voting will... How has that been designated by the Secretary of State's office?
The Secretary of State's office has designated the day after the Labor Day as Voting Day, which for a lot of people is an issue. And the issue is lots of kids going off to college, people are not gonna be around, it's the day after a holiday, people are having guests, and, you know, it's an issue for Massachusetts all the way around. The early voting is only supposed to be for the election in November. That was what was voted on at the legislature prior to the 2016 election, presidential election.
So, there's absentee ballot voting for the primary scheduled for September 4th and for the final election...
Yes.
...for November 6th, but early voting is only gonna be allowed for the general election on November 6th.
Currently, that is the way it is, yes.
And that will begin on what date? How far before November 6th?
Eleven days prior.
Eleven days, okay. Thank you. What is that? Well, I don't have the date.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
For all your work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ann.
All right, we're gonna move on. Vice President Crocker, could we please act on the minutes of May 17th, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Our packet tonight, we have the town council meeting minutes of May 17th, 2018, and I raised to move them into the record as drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor of approving the town council meeting minutes of May 17th, 2018? And that is unanimous. All right. Counsel Communications. Anyone have any announcements? Counselor Beedenbender.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let people know about two events that are taking place. The first is happening on June 12th, which is next week, at 6:30 PM in this building. There's going to be a screening of the documentary called Generation Zapped. So, anyone who's interested in what's going on with telecommunications and the potential health impacts of those technologies are welcome to come. It's open to the public, free, and it's an opportunity to... It's about an hour and 15 minutes, I think, the documentary, to learn a great deal about a subject that has been in the news quite a bit. The second thing that I'd like to tell you about is in Centerville, on July 4th, we have our annual parade, and it's an awful lot of fun. So, at 10:00 AM, we start, and so we just wanted to invite the entire community to join us. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Rap Crissetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. The annual Strawberry Festival in the town of... Or the Village of Kootuat takes place this Saturday, June 9th, from 12 to 4:00, at 1148 Main Street. It's hosted by the Historical Society of Santuat and Kootuat. There'll be strawberry shortcakes, whipped cream, root beer floats, and games, and the museum will be open as well. Also, on Tuesday is opening day for the Kootuat Kettleers, and they play the Brewster Whitecaps at, geez, 5:00. I saw a couple of kettleers today. It's good to have them back in town. I'm not sure when Hyanna's first game is, but...
Our hearts is... Come here.
Go kettleers.
Counselor Flores.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Just to reiterate once again, on June 14th at 7:00 at Tales of Cape Cod, which is at the old courthouse on 6A, we will be having that presentation at 7:00 PM, talking about storm water, where does it go, how's it impact, if you will, the water here in Barnstable, both on the North Side and the South Side. In addition, just a reminder to my constituents that on June 15th, which is the third Friday of the month, the third Friday of every month, State Representative Tim Whalen and I do hold constituent hours at the Sturgis Library from 3:00 to 4:00. So, anybody that might have an issue or concern, whatever the case might be, June 15th, 3:00 to 4:00, which again is the third Friday. Finally, as Hank, as a former counselor, Hank finally mentioned, the car show is an absolute blast. I go every year. It is June 17th. It's a great way to spend a Father's Day afternoon. Pray to God that the weather is good, like it wasn't a few years ago when it really got rained out, but it's a really great take-in. And like Counselor Britt Beedenbender suggested, Barnstable, the Village of Barnstable, on July 4th will be having its parade at 9:00 AM. Once again, we invite anybody and everybody who might even wanna march. It's a great parade. It's about as hokey as it gets. So, we invite you all. It's a lot of fun. It's a good time. And with that being said, I think that sums up what I wanna say, except finally, just in terms of some of the conversations that have been ongoing this evening, I just wanna be sure from my perspective and from the council's perspective, when we talked about bids, we talked about Steve Luciano signs, we talked about committees that are being suggested, that they'd be reexamined, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us as councilors... You know, I've run all of my campaigns based on transparency, integrity, and preservation, and I wanna be sure that we are as transparent as possible and upfront in terms of if we wanna make changes, if we wanna suggest recommendations as we move forward, because pretty much the entire discussion of what has been raised by some of the folks who don't wanna be part of the bid, Mr. Luciano with the signs, some of the committees that were discussed, is really, and from my perspective, it's communication. And if we maintain a commitment of total transparency, then we eliminate that issue of doubt, if you will, and makes us appear at the highest level of integrity, which I think is incumbent upon all of us, and I know we all are as we serve as town councilors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schnep.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Saturday, June 9th, at 8:30 AM, there's gonna be a wall raising at the Habitat Site just off of River Road, Dickerson Drive. And this is a wonderful opportunity to join with the volunteers and the families. There's four families that have been selected to have new homes in our town, and it all started with the town's commitment of community development block grant funds to help purchase the land and put the... Some of the infrastructure in. So, I'm very excited to announce that the foundations are in, the walls are ready to be raised, and anybody in the community is invited to join us at 8:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Levesque.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself and Counselor Schnep, last night, I should say, excuse me, Tuesday night, we had the privilege to go to the Marston's Mills Villas Association meeting and see four graduating high school seniors from Marston's Mills receive $1,000 scholarships from the Village Association. And those in order are McKenna Meager, Devin McDonald, Aaron Tang, and Lucy Grace Bell Fiori. And it was great. They had an opportunity to read their essays that they wrote about growing up in Marston's Mills and what they valued about that, and people they met along the way and experiences they had, and it was a... Quite a celebration. So, I just wanted to tip my cap to them and congratulate them. It was a great opportunity, and standing room only as well. So, it was a full house. And they also, if anybody's looking for a doubleheader on Father's Day, no pun intended, after the car show, if you walk up the street a little bit or drive your car, there'll be the minor league and a major league, Barnstable Little League Championship Games. Festivities start somewhere around 12:30, 1:00, and the games begin soon thereafter. And it's a great time, a little bit of Americana, and just a beautiful opening ceremony that takes place over there at the wonderful LaRusso Complex that we're blessed to have here in the town. So, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. First, last meeting, I wasn't here because I was attending my daughter... My oldest daughter's graduation. She received her master's degree. And I bring that up not for her, but several years ago, when she graduated from Simmons, I brought it up that there were five awards given out at that graduation ceremony, and all five recipients happened to be Barnstable High School graduates, which was amazing out of thousands of young ladies getting their diploma. Once again, and... But I will give a shout-out to my daughter. She did receive an award. And while I don't have the numbers, once again, over half of the young women receiving their master's degrees and getting awards from Simmons were Barnstable High School graduates. When you consider they have students from not only all over Massachusetts and the country, but literally from all over the world, that just says something quite spectacular about our school system. So, that's really why I wanted to bring that up. Secondly, many of my constituents like to come by my office and see me. I wanted to announce that has switched. I used to be on Route 28. I am now at 556 Yarmouth Road, or what we all call Willow Street, for those of us who have been here a long time. So, if you need to stop by and see me any day but Thursday, please do.
Counselor Flores.
Just an observation. I wanted to recognize Chief Frank Pulcifer from Barnstable. He's not usually here at these meetings, so give you a shout-out, Frank. Thank you for attending. I know you watch them religiously on TV, I'm sure. But seeing you here tonight is a good sight, as well as also seeing Chief Peter Burke, who at one time was the deputy chief in Barnstable. Great to see both of you.
Any other councilors? All right, we're gonna move into the orders of the day, and we're gonna take some things out of order tonight. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-160, please, under New Business? It's on page 41.
Yes, Mr. President. 141 is a different page. 42, thank you, the page, and it's just off. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. President. 2018-160, it's my pleasure to confirm an appointment of Matthew K. Sonnabon as Barnstable's Chief of Police. The Barnstable Town Council hereby confirms the appointment by the Town Manager Mark S. Els of Matthew K. Sonnabon as Chief of Barnstable, as written.
I have a second. Is there any council discussion on this item? Counselor Flores.
Yeah, just a comment and observation. I think this was a very well orchestrated process under Town Manager Mark Els. I know that we had three finalists, all who were excellent candidates. At the end of any selection process, one person, male or female, emerges to the top, and I'm really pleased with the manager's recommendation. Thank you.
Any other councilors? I have a second. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-160, confirmation of appointment of Matthew K. Sonnabon as Barnstable Chief of Police. All those...
Roll call, both, please.
Adam Clark.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Glad your family could be here as well. It's a great moment. Look forward to working with you. Chief? All right, we're gonna continue to take some things out of order. We're gonna put the chief right to work. Vice President Crocker, could you go ahead and read under Old Business, item 2018-111, and open the public hearing, please? Page 5 or 6, first item under Old Business.
Thank you, Mr. President. Old Business Hearing, Majority Vote Necessary. 2018-111, the appropriation order in the amount of $14,532, $532,512 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Barnstable Police Department Budget, as written.
Second. Welcome, Chief Sonnabon.
There we go. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, citizens of the town of Barnstable. I'm really overwhelmed with this. It feels awesome and a true privilege to continue working with the men and women of the Barnstable Police Department. And if you don't mind, if you could indulge me for just a minute, I do have a couple of things to say. As I sat in the back, and stood in the back of the room, and I listened to the comments, particularly Ms. Barboza and Counselor Dagwan, Chief McDonald was here with the police department for a long time, 37 years, and he was our chief for 12 years. And during that time, he went out of his way to work extensively with the community, and he set a very high... Very high bar for the police department. And during the process of selecting the new chief, you're correct, all the candidates were very excellent, and I'm blessed to continue to work with them and count on them every day as I move forward and seek their advice, as I'll seek many of the... As I'll seek the advice of many of you and other people in this room and in the community. Because as Ms. Barbara Barboza correctly pointed out, this is a community, and the police department isn't gonna do anything by itself. The town council doesn't do anything by itself. We don't get anywhere alone. When we're, you know, at our lowest points or at our... And I don't, we don't intend on going below the bar or around it. We're going to try and go over it. With your help, we'll get there. So thank you. And before we start the budget, I just want to say one, one real special thank you. This is my first budget. And yeah, it is nervous, it's nerve wracking to stand up here for the first time. But there's one person that's had a lot of hands, her hands in a lot of the budgets and helping the police department stay on track fiscally and be sound, and that's Ann Spillane. She's sitting here, right here. And I did want to say, and I'm going to step away from the mic for a minute, but I wanted to say thanks to Ann, because she prepared me a nice book. So if I get lost, it's right here, and she's right here to say thanks to her. Even if I presented badly, this is a good budget that she really had a lot of, a lot of input on. And if I do it wrong, I'm sure she's going to hit me. And one other thing, Lynn Pointeau, I was directed by Lynn Pointeau, that I did have to say one thing. I didn't do it first, and I'm sorry, Lynn, but Unity Day is scheduled for August 3rd.
Is that correct, Lynn?
Yes. So Unity Day is scheduled for August 3rd. So here we are, the Barnstable Police Department budget. Right here is a schematic or an example of our calls for service over the past few years. And as you'll, as you'll note, the calls for service for the year for 2017 were 65,416. That's approximately 2,000 more than last year. However, you'll notice by looking at the distribution for calls throughout the town, broken down by village, Hyannis had the most with about 68%, and West Barnstable had the least with 2%. And historically, throughout the years, regardless of the number of calls, and Eric Drifmeyer, Sergeant Drifmeyer is our crime analyst, you can correct me on this if I'm wrong, they pretty much remained the same as far as call distribution throughout the villages, regardless of how high or how low our calls go, the distribution and the percentages remain historically the same throughout time. Factors that affect our calls for services obviously can, you know, come from how many calls we get from the public, but they also can vary due to things like officers' self-initiated activity with the advent of the computers in the cars and everything. Officers can more directly put what they're doing into the computer then and goes right into the calls instead of having to call it over the radio. So that does have a little bit of effect on the calls for service over the years. The next slide we're talking about here is Part 1 index crimes. Those are classified by the FBI as murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft. They are considered the benchmarks of, we report to crimes to Nibers and to the FBI, and they keep track of these over the years. If you look at 2017, you'll notice that we reported 720 total Part 1 crimes over the, over the course of the year. And that is down approximately 19% from, is down 19% from the previous year, and has been, is on a continuing downward trend since about 2015. They, we believe there's a couple of reasons for that. It's not necessarily that people are committing less crimes per se, but in 2014, we saw a large spike in burglary and property crimes of that nature. And that was also the year that the opiate crisis really hit. So you can see the effect of that through the crime stats here by people going out to steal, to support their habits, breaking in, doing things like that, and it was reflected in the crime stats here. Over time, although we are still are dealing with the opiate crisis, and we'll talk about that here in a little bit, some of those things have, you know, been lessened by, some people have gone to jail. So some people out there committing those types of crimes are no longer in circulation. Some people have gotten treatment, some people unfortunately have passed away. So some of those things do have an effect on the crimes there. But in 2015, we should also note that we did discover a coding error while we were going through some statistics at the police department, in which we found that some of the crimes we're reporting were coded wrongly and were reported as crime, Part 1 crimes when they should not have been reported as Part 1 crimes. So that has an effect to bring it down a little bit. It wasn't that those crimes weren't occurring, there still were calls for service, however, they were more like Part 2 crimes and should have been classified there and not into the Part 1, Part 1 crimes. So as I was preparing for this budget presentation and looking over the fine documents that Ann prepared for me and Sergeant Drifmeyer prepared, I took a look at the Part 2 crimes, and they're not, they're not on the slides here tonight. But I did notice that this year, the Part 2 crimes increased by 16%, which, coincidentally, we went down by 19% in the Part 1 crimes, but went up 16% in the Part 2 crimes. And the Part 2 crimes the FBI looked at are OUI, drug offenses, stolen property, simple assault, disorderly conduct, forgery, embezzlement, fraud, things of that nature that are not necessarily the violent crimes. So some of the crimes that we've been maybe classifying inadvertently as a Part 1 crime are now being reported properly through the Part 2 crimes, and that's why you see that increase there. So overall, we're looking at about a 3% decrease overall. And it should be noted that, and I believe Eric, if I'm correct, in 2021, the Part 1 crimes of the, part crime, part 1s and part 2 crimes, the FBI does, are offense driven. So another thing that can affect this is if, say, an offender commits more than one crime at a time. The FBI only classifies the most serious crime that is committed that day. So those other two crimes, if carded into the, by the FBI, they're just not recorded. They happened, we record them, but they don't, the FBI doesn't record them. So if they committed a murder and they also committed a larceny or a motor vehicle theft, the murder gets recorded, but the larceny or motor vehicle theft do not. So to correct that, they're going to a newer system, which is more victim-based. So what'll happen is anytime anybody is victimized, that gets reported. It won't be offense-based like it was under the Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, and it'll be called Nibers, I believe it's Group A and Group B, correct? Correct. And that'll, that is expected to start in 2021. The next slide, we're talking about investigative services, and on this slide, you can see some of the work of the detective division throughout the year. It is a little different than the slide that you have in the books that was prepared for you, because when you get down to the drug portion down there, those are the most current stats we have as of yesterday, to date for this year. And as we talked about earlier with the Part 1 crimes, although crime may be down, we are still dealing with the opiate epidemic. The number of opiate overdoses and fatal overdoses continue at an alarming rate. Fentanyl, however, has displaced heroin. Even the heroin we find now is more often cut with fentanyl. So you can see there, and I had to double check, I actually had to go talk to detectives when I was looking at this, heroin, 182 grams has been seized. That's seemed kind of low to me, but then they explained to me, well, no, the fentanyl's 855 grams so far this year. And even the heroin they're getting and testing has been so cut with fentanyl that it shows up as fentanyl when they, when they examine it. So the heroin really has dropped off and been misplaced by this more, much more dangerous drug and what our detectives are seeing and dealing with out there. A couple of points of interest throughout the year, significant arrests have been made involving different groups of individuals. Through the use of our newly acquired aerial drone, the detectives used to investigate and arrest Troy Montero and Trevor Rose for a large-scale fentanyl distribution ring. They were coming from the city of New Bedford and using Hyannis Port. You may have remembered that, using down around, areas around Hyannis Port, the beaches and stuff. So what the detectives did, because down there in the winter, it's hard to actually surveil anybody, used this, used the drone to keep an eye on what was going on. And as a result of that investigation, we're able to recover 200 grams of fentanyl from a hole that one of the individuals had dug and buried on the beach. Also, $20,000 was ultimately seized. But more to the point, in showing how progressive thinking the police department is, that was the use of their drone to do what they did was the first such case of that nature in the state, to use a drone to, you know, keep the police, police out of harm's way and the public out of harm's way, but to be able to keep track of and find out what the bad guys are doing. They also dismantled a large-scale drug trafficking organization in West Barnstable, an individual by the name of Michael Bryant of New York and West Barnstable was using and addressing West Barnstable. The detectives were able to conduct an investigation on that, and from there, 300 oxycodone and Xanax pills were recovered, and over 500 grams of cocaine with a street value of $70,000. So as you can see, the drugs really are still a main priority of the police department. We are going to do our best to keep on top of that and keep working progressively on it. And lastly, one of this, this picture here, the Obit Bandit. You know, I'd heard anecdotally since the police department that, you know, you've got to be careful, people read the obituaries and do this, but I got to say, this is the first time that I really had actually come across somebody being arrested for doing this. And our detective division got information through some burglaries and other things that were happening that this individual was scouting locations by reading obituaries. And eventually, through their investigative methods, we're able to catch him red-handed in the act in Kootuwa and recover the property. And as a result of his arrest, 18 different burglaries in three different counties were cleared. So far, five different people have recovered their property and it's been returned to them, although they are still working forward on that and still trying to identify some other victims and whatnot. So, and this is progressing forward in court. These pictures show some of the other things that the detectives have recovered and the police department have recovered over the course of the year. This just shows you what they find and what they come across, or the investigations patrol officers might run across. Of most significant to note, since the murder of Sergeant Sean Gannon on April 12th in Marston's Mills, the detective division has continued to serve search warrants, and the search warrants that they have served have resulted in eight guns being taken off the streets in this town. So they are out there, and we are recovering them, and we are aggressively pursuing these The Community Impact Unit. If I had another half an hour, I could probably just talk about the Community Impact Unit. It is a great group of dedicated individuals who are very good at what they do. We did hold some interviews today to appoint a new supervisor for that unit. We'll be talking about what the results of that were coming up. And that unit is going to continue. We are going to move forward with that. It is going to stay in place, and they are going to be out there doing what they need to do for the summer. I know that some people had some trepidation about the changes in leadership and everything and whether, what was going to happen with this. And if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And it works pretty darn well. So we're going to continue with that. And just a few things, like I said, there's so many things I could say about these people, but just their dedication and motivation is probably the best thing I can say. They are awesome. They participate in weekly drug court with, so that there's coordination with the police and the courts to divert people away from traditional criminal justice sentencing. They conduct weekly follow-ups with Gosnell to get out there to go buy, to buy overdose victims and try to get them into treatment. They work with recreation and school staff and school resource officers to run a program for middle school students at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. And they also try and identify at-risk youth to get them the help they need. They also established the first CCIT team on Cape Cod, a Community Crisis Intervention Team, that continues to meet to this day. People that participate, groups that participate in this system include the Barnstable District Court, the District Attorney's Office, AIDS Support Group of Cape Cod, Bay Bridge Clubhouse, NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Health, Vinfen, Department of Mental Health, Bay Cove Emergency Services, Duffy Health Organization, Housing Assistance Corp., Cape Cod Healthcare, Yarmouth PD, and Hyannis Fire. These people are truly dedicated to trying to work on this problem, and we're going to keep moving on it. They also coordinate weekly meetings with the street outreach team in Bay Cove to make sure people who are out in crisis outside their homes are getting the treatment that they need or have access to it or can be identified and led in the right way. Also, the CSO program has been a huge hit. Right now, we're in the process of training the 10 officer, the 10 CSOs that are going to be out there on Main Street this summer, and will be, they'll be hitting the streets here shortly. So that program is also going to continue. It has been a great asset to the police department and the community. And I think by having those individuals out there, we really show that, you know, we're here for you, and we're going to keep continuing in on this. Communication Center. This has been ongoing for a little while. We did have some pretty old stuff. It was carpeted and everything else. It was, it was dark, and it was, it was not a pleasant place to be sometimes at work. But it is a very important place in the town, because every, all the emergency calls that come in to the police department and through the 911 system, come into this, come into this room. And we realized that it is the center and the heartbeat of the department, and it really needed a lift. So over the course of the winter, particularly starting in February and through March, there was some cosmetic renovations that were done. There was a lot of work that was accomplished. You can see, and there's a lot of new screens and new equipment. One of the big things is the next generation 911 system was installed, so we can more accurately track and keep track and find out where people are when they're in a state of emergency. Gets ma, a little, the mapping is better, and the communications back and forth between the people on the phones is going to be better. Another thing that we started in December is the wireless cellular calls that are made in the town of Barnstable come directly now to our 911 center. In the days gone by, before December, they would go to the state police, off in their communication center, and then they would ask you a bunch of questions, and then they transfer you somewhere. And then that person would ask you a bunch of questions, and then they'd transfer you somewhere. So sure, that is over with now. All those 911 calls are now being routed to our dispatch center, and we're taking care of them there. So the tran, number of transfers has been cut, and that takes minutes off of some of these calls when seconds can matter. We've eliminated minutes off of some of these calls. Also, with Chief Burke here, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we had a lot of new radio equipment that was put in there, brought us into the modern age. And this is due to an MOU that was struck with the Hyannis Fire District and the Hyannis Fire Department to provide, to bring them on board and to work colla, in a collaboration to provide emergency dispatch services jointly for the police department and the fire department in the village of Hyannis. A lot of this work was spearheaded by Chief Burke, and he was there, he was an immense asset to doing this. But I would also, I would not be giving due credit where due credit is due if I did not mention Lieutenant Mark Cabral. A lot of these cosmetics and everything really happened because of Mark's expertise and because of his hard work and vision, we are realizing the benefits of what he has done. And I wanted to thank him and Chief Burke for their work in all of this, and the men and women of the Barnstable Fire Department, the Hyannis Fire Department as well, in providing training for the new dispatchers that we'll talk about in a minute. But they did an excellent work, and I really needed to mention their names. Going hand in hand with the physical changes of the Communication Center, we have hired and trained 12 civilian dispatchers in fiscal year 18. Combined with the two existing dispatches we already had on staff, brings the staff total to 14 dispatchers that we have, now have working in the Communication Center. Right now, they're finalizing their training, they're in the, what we call the field training portion, where they're in the dispatch center with an officer and other dispatchers that are training them on how to properly handle calls and route things and to do things, and to do things in the appropriate manner. 11 of the dispatchers are funded through the police operating budget, and this is where the collaboration with Hyannis Fire comes in. Three additional dispatchers are, were hired and paid for. to provide, to bring them on board and to work colla, in a collaboration to provide emergency dispatch services jointly for the police department and the fire department in the Village of Hyannis. A lot of this work was spearheaded by Chief Burke, and he was there, he was an immense asset to doing this. But I would also, I would not be giving due credit where due credit is due if I did not mention Lieutenant Mark Cabral. A lot of these cosmetics and everything really happened because of Mark's expertise, and because of his hard work and vision, we are realizing the benefits of what he has done. And I wanted to thank him and Chief Burke for their work in all of this, and the men and women of the Barnstable Fire Depart, uh, the Hyannis Fire Department as well, in providing training for the new dispatchers that we'll talk about in a minute. But they did an excellent work, and I really needed to mention their names. Going hand-in-hand with the physical changes of the communication center, we have hired and trained 12 civilian dispatchers in fiscal year 18. Combined with the two existing dispatchers we already had on staff, brings the staff total to 14 dispatchers that we have, now have working in the communication center. Right now, they're finalizing their training. They're in the, what we call the field training portion, where they're in the dispatch center with an officer and other dispatchers that are training them on how to properly handle calls and route things, and to do things pro, and to do things in the appropriate manner. 11 of the dispatchers are funded through the police operating budget, and this is where the collaboration with Hyannis Fire comes in. Three additional dispatchers are, were hired and paid for by Hyannis Fire Department in the amount of $173,582. That money's been put, going to be put into our budget, and they will, they will work at the Joint Police, Fire, and Dispatch Center with the rest of the dispatchers. And throughout the year, Hyannis Fire will be billed back through the town and reimbursed to the town for that, for those expenses of those three individuals. So we were able to expand the working group that we do have down in the dispatch center. Overall, what does this, what does this really mean? What this means is that in this day and age, the 911 center is something you don't want to half-step. We've got emergency medical dispatch down there. We have night, next-generation 911 equipment. We have wireless tracing down in there. It is a true profession. And we've gone the lengths to hire the appropriate people to put in there so that they can do their job, that they can be highly-trained professionals, do it every day. So when that call comes in, you might not be having somebody that's in there just for one day, out of their course of four or five days of work, or may not have been in there for a little while. But you're getting someone that does this every day, and it can really, really bring a lot to the table and help you in, in the right time. What it also does is it frees up those police officers that were not necessarily trained to sit and answer phones. They were trained to go out and do things like the Community Impact Unit, Detective Investigations, Traffic Enforcement, Staffing Shifts. It'll free those individuals up to once again do those things that they were initially hired to do. So how do we achieve this? We do look at a couple of funding offsets for this. The state 911 Support and Incentive Grant, the amount of $202,000. What that does is that will reimburse for the regular sal, regular salary, regular pay and overtime of a 911 dispatcher that is assigned into the dispatch center. So we get money reimbursed from the state for their regular pay and for overtime. So we're looking to cut, you know, we're looking to save $202,000 there. The second funding offset is a reduction in overtime. The dispatchers do make less money than the police officers. So when a dispatcher has to be hired or brought in, it saves the cost of having to hire a police officer in overtime to sit in a dispatch area. It also helps to save approximately $75,000 in overtime costs, because some of these other units and other tasks, mountain bikes, boats, foot patrols, CIU, meetings. When officers had to sit in dispatch, we had to hire somebody overtime to go to those meetings or to staff those other things. So now that those officers don't longer have to sit in dispatch, now they can go back out and do what they were hired to do, and can save us a little bit of overtime in that way. Some of the other decision packages that we had put in for, and want to talk about, is increased funding for police training in the amount of $36,186. The police department really functions on training. It is, it's a, it's key to how we do things every day, and to keep officers who are out there making judgments about when to arrest somebody, when not to arrest somebody, when to use force, when to, how to conduct narcotics investigations. They have to be properly trained to do those things, and that training is ongoing and continuous. Even the dispatchers need to be trained continuously on how to do things. Because when other people's lives are at stake, they need to be properly trained on how to do what they do every day. And so to do that, to do some specialized training course costs of about $16,000. There are some courses that are, courses that are listed there that we are looking at doing over the course of the year. Some of those we may do. If priorities change, some of those may change to something else, depending on what happens. But right now, we are looking at those, such as driver instructing, driver instructor training, street-level narcotics investigations, management training, virtual network training, and advanced smart, smartphone analysis. The other side of this, in the amount of $20,186, is overtime for specialized training. And it may cost us a little bit to send someone, or to enroll someone in training, but the real cost comes from the overtime, because a lot of these trainings are conducted during the day. Two-thirds of the police department work at night. And if you're sending someone off on, not on their regular shift, sometimes an overtime situation occurs from that. And even in situations where you have to send somebody, and it may not result in overtime sending that person, maybe their job has to be replaced, maybe their, maybe their slot on the shift has to be replaced on overtime. So that's where the overtime costs come in on that for the specialized training. Detailed tracking software. This is another decision package. Last year, we purchased the detail system that really automated a lot of the stuff. Before traffic officers or clerical personnel upstairs had to physically sit, keep track of, make phone calls, and pen and paper stuff into, to make sure the details were properly taken care of and tracked. Through the system, the information can be put in. The system pages it out, fills it, schedules it, and does everything all on its own with very minor input from the officers that are running it. However, it does have a yearly maintenance cost, and the yearly maintenance cost is $8,762. Recruiting, hiring, equipment costs for five officers. Currently, we have about eight vacancies in the police department. We have hired, we're in the process right now of, we're in the conditional offer phase right now for five officers that have just been interviewed. Right now, they're going out and getting their ment, you know, their physicals and psychological exams and other things before the academy starts in September. This cost here is to cover the cost of those medical things, the cost of uniforms, the cost of academy tuition books and things like that. So that's what this expenditure is for. We do anticipate, probably later in the fall or maybe early winter, hiring another round of five officers. However, that's really going to be dependent on the academy dates, which right now, we're not sure of. So that could go a little bit later, or it could be a little bit sooner. Vehicles, $360,000. That's to replace eight vehicles with eight new vehicles, and the associated equipment in those vehicles, cages, lights, computers, things like that. Obviously, our cars run 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and because of the size of the town, we are heavily dependent on vehicles to get from one emergency to another, or even just from one routine call to another, or even from one meeting to another. So with those vehicles, some of those vehicles run, can run 24 hours at a time, maybe several days, before they're shut down, when somebody doesn't need it, or when it has to go down for maintenance or whatever. And as a vehicle ages, you know, obviously, the maintenance costs go up. The time it's down off the road for maintenance increases. So right now, what we're trying to do is replace eight of these vehicles with new vehicles. The other increase in fuel, $30,000. That's by contract, and the Plymouth County contract this year did go up. The price per gallon did go up, and that reflects the $30,000. Here is a summary of the decision packages that we have brought forward or bringing forward today. There is one correction on there at the bottom. It is not in your book. There's the overtime of $34,000. That was an oversight that wasn't placed into the slide, into the books that you have. However, it was in the main budget document. It is in there. All the, all the decision packages are there. And what this reflects is an increase to the overtime to keep pace with the 2% cost of living increase, and with anticipated step increases to salaries that are going to occur. So this will allow the overtime budget to keep pace with the number of hours that are going to be expended, so we won't run out in that, in that area. Budget assumptions. Overall, can't go too far from this microphone. Overall, the, the budget for fiscal year 19 is going up about 5.04%, or about $696,667. The operating costs are increasing by about 11.74%. Personnel costs are increasing by about 5%, which is really reflective of the expansion of this, of a couple of things. The, the three additional dispatchers, but also last year, the dispatchers were only in there for a half-year. This year, it's full year, so that kind of reflects that cost there as well. The headcount of the department is increasing, three FTEs to reflect the three personnel that were hired by the Hyannis Fire Department to staff the dispatch center at the police department. And the capital budget is decreasing approximately $34,120, or 8.66% due to the elimination of one-cost expenditures in IT and safety equipment that were made in fiscal year 18. And here is a pie chart of how it breaks down. Roughly, approximately 91% of everything is personnel expenses. Because honestly, people are our best asset, and if you want good people, you've got to pay for people, and that's the biggest asset we have. Operating expenses are about 6.68%, and capital expenses are about 2.48%. And I would, again, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Chief McDonald. He really, he was an excellent leader for the police department, put us on the right path, and we hope to follow in his footsteps and continue, not just myself, but the rest of us. We have a great, I have, I have a great bunch of people that I work with, and I could not say enough about them. And really, he put them there. So thank you, Chief McDonald, for your service, and thank you for guiding us to where we are today, and hopefully, we will carry that torch forward. One last thing. It has been a real tough few months since Sean Gannon was murdered, and, I don't know if my family's still here, but... When you take the job, you understand a few things, and it's kind of at a, kind of off in the distance. It's kind of, you, you acknowledge it, but you're not really, you don't really know that it's going to happen until it happens to you. And I was working that day. It's one of the toughest days that I've ever been with, but we all got through it because the men and women I work with are excellent and did their jobs. But what we didn't expect was when we were going through that dark time, and we were dealing with some of the most difficult things we've ever dealt with, and dealing with the transition to a new chief, and everyone was worried, not knowing what to do. You all came forward and supported us. We had gifts from every corner of the town, food. Thank you for the soup. It was excellent. Food, cards, thank yous. Take for granted that we're out there. We know we're out there, and we're there to serve the public. But you take for granted that you don't understand that they really see that you do serve them. But it was awesome to see how much love came out of the, out of the town for the, for the police officers here in this, here over the last few weeks. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much. And we did, we did see it, and it meant a lot to us. Thank you. And if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation, and thank you for all the years leading up to this and your service with the BPD. And obviously, in these last couple of months, they were difficult, obviously, for, for all, and I know you were a big part of that in helping to lead the, the BPD through that and, and the community, so thank you. And we're looking forward to working with you going forward.
As am I.
All right. This is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, and that's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Beanbender.
I would just like to ask a question, but first, I just want to thank you and all your fellow officers for serving us so well in this town. So thank you. Just a point of curiosity, about how many overtime hours are logged annually?
And I was just asking Eric about this earlier, and I don't have that in front of me right now, but I could get that back to you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Counsel Flores.
Thank you, Chief. Good presentation. First time.
Yes.
I'm curious, on page two of the booklet that you passed out on the drugs from fentanyl, cocaine, heroin, marijuana, and oxycodone. As we recover, whether they be vehicle seizures, whether they be cash seizures, whether they be drug seizures, does that offset any of the budgetary requirements for the department?
What happens is, is there's a procedure that the seizures have to go through. So like right now, we're trying to sell a truck right now that was seized through, a couple of years ago, through an investigation. So all the court cases have to be exhausted, and eventually, some of that money gets split. It gets split, depending on if it's state or federal, how much the percentages are, where it goes to. Some of it goes to the DA's office, some of it goes to the prosecutor, some of it goes to our police department. If we're involved with more than one police department in an investigation, that money gets split up from different people, and then we can, there are rules about what that money can be used for, depending on state versus federal. There are some different rules. And if I'm missing anything, Anne, but it can be used for different things, but in an investigation that happens this year, we might not see that money come back until two or three years down the road, so it's kind of hard to offset directly.
Just one other question. I noticed that the drugs that were picked up, you collected 25 pounds of marijuana, which had $80,000 worth of street value. With the change, obviously, of the law in Massachusetts, that probably won't be a category next year. I'm curious, from your perspective as the chief and as you work with your detectives, will that $80,000 worth of street value, will that, will that 25 pounds go to a legal entity somewhere else on Cape Cod that someone would buy? Or do you still see a black market continuing?
You know, honestly, I would think that a black market would continue, because they still sell Lucy cigarettes and non-tax-stamped cigarettes and everything else, and cigarettes are legal. So I would anticipate that the marijuana black market for that's going to continue, because who knows how much it's going to be priced at if you want to go into a store to buy legal marijuana, when you can go to a corner and try and buy it a little under the table. And the amounts we're talking about when we seize these, it's not the nickel and dimes from pocketfuls from kids at a car stop or anything else like this. These are significant amounts, pounds at a time that are seized, and there still will be, there's still laws on the book for, books for trafficking and distribution of marijuana. And I would anticipate that those would continue, and the federal statutes to this date have not changed, so I would anticipate that would also continue.
Thank you.
Counsel O'Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, congratulations, Chief Sonnenbend.
Thank you.
The vetting process must have been very, very intensive, I'm sure.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Just, just on, on your page 13 here, I just had a question regarding the, the budget assumptions. Obviously, most, well, basically, all of the costs come from personnel, and personnel is, you know, needed and, and obviously legitimate. The question I had is, it indicates that, you know, there was obviously a year-over-year increase, but there's an increase of 234,000. It's, it's about funding the civilian dispatch program, and then it indicates that there's, there was a grant. Is there any anticipation that maybe grants of that kind may continue going forward for the 911, or is that kind of like a one-time deal to, to establish it? I'm just curious.
And Anne deals with this specifically, but real, real short, that has been an ongoing grant for numerous, for several years, and it is something that we've dealt with over the course of years, and we have used it in the past to supplement when we put police officers in there, using their overtime. So long as, so long as they were 911-trained and certified, and EMD-certified, and eligible to work in the dispatch center, we were eligible to recoup the cost of having them there in the dispatch center. Now that the police officers aren't going to be there, we anticipate the cost will go further, because the dispatchers are, are paid a lower base rate than the police officers would be, even in the overtime. So that $202,000 would be used to go back to that $234,000 that you were talking about to lower that number down. Am I answering that sufficiently?
I'm just curious about going forward.
We do anticipate that will continue. Anne, have we received any from the state indicating there?
No, okay. For the foreseeable future, I can see this grant continuing. It is funded differently than other types of state grants, and that some of that money is derived from actual phone bills and things like that. So I think for the future, this is the amount that we are going to get probably every year, unless something very dramatically changes.
Terrific. Thank, thank you.
And we've had this grant, we've had the Support and Incentive Grant and the Training Grant through the state 911 for several years now.
Any other councils? Counsel Daglin.
Thank you for the presentation, and congratulations as well.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Just two things. One, I wanted to ask, do you, does the police department get any of the money back that you confiscate through drug tra, drug trafficking? And the second one has to do with something that I'm hearing a lot about, which is human trafficking. And do, you know, is your department experiencing any elements of that?
First of all, the, about the money, yes, we do get some of it, depending. There is, depending on whether it falls under a state prosecution or a federal prosecution, it can determine how much of that percentage we may get. There is also, again, all the legal proceedings have to be exhausted, and the defendants in those cases have the right to appeal, whether... in those cases have the right to appeal whether or not we can seize that money. So, provided everything goes according to the plan and we do get the money, it is then split by the agencies that participated and the prosecuting divisions, whatever that might be, state or federal. So, you'll get some slice of that money, and then once you get it, there are rules to what you can use that money for. And as far as the human trafficking, um, seen in the paper recently, they've had like massage parlors and things like that, and I think there was, um, maybe a month or two ago, there was an arrest that was made, and I can't remember where exactly off the top of my head, but there was an individual that was locally charged with human trafficking violations for bringing people in and putting in the massage parlors and engaging in, engaging in activities they shouldn't be engaging in. So, I think it would be naive to think that it doesn't occur. We may not know about it directly, but we do have people that are trained, uh, Officer Caterina Paracci is one in particular that spends some time talking to people about this and educating people and has done a lot of work with that. So, we do keep an awareness to it, and we do follow up on it as best we can.
Any other counselors? Counselor Wallace?
Thank you. Congratulations. Uh, that, I feel that town's very lucky to have you as our new chief of police, and...
I appreciate it, thank you.
Um, I do have a question with respect to, um, making arrests in, in a situation similar to the one that, that happened here in April with, uh, the tragic loss of Sergeant Gannon. Is it common for the different, uh, police departments to share personnel so that our, our officers will be found in Yarmouth or, or Dennis or another town to make an arrest like, uh, the situation we had here with a Yarmouth Police Department officer, uh, K-9 officer, um, making an arrest in our town in the village of...
Yes, it, it is not uncommon. Um, we do have memorandums of understanding and agreement and cooperation and mutual aid with all the Cape towns. We do interact with them, we do train with them, uh, the law enforcement council on the Cape, there is a SWAT team that is made up of people from the, you know, officers from the town of Barnstable, Yarmouth, P-Town, and variety of other towns, Harwich. So, we do inter-cooperate, we do work together. It doesn't happen every day, but it is not uncommon that things like that can happen, and typically in police investigations, you may start out with a, in this case, a warrant in one town, and you follow where that goes. And so, you maintain contact with the police departments, where the town you're going into, but, you know, if you're with the state police, or you could be with your own agency, following where those warrants go, and you have the authority to make those arrests based on those warrants, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Schnep?
Again, congratulations, Chief Sonnenbend.
Thank you.
Um, with the recent escalation in school violence, um, I believe I'd heard that there might be a larger police presence or school resource presence in our schools, but I'm not sure if that's the case, and could you speak to whether there's been any change in that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, what we did is, you know, after, um, Parkland, Florida, uh, what we did was, uh, we did put another officer in the high school, so there's two officers right now in the high school for the rest of the year. We did put an officer into the intermediate school, and that officer will be there, um, till the end of the year. Um, we adopt the school officers and the regular patrol officers, we did ask to step up and make more frequent visits to the other schools around town. But, as, you know, law enforcement's kind of a funny business, what your priorities are today can change tomorrow by something that happens in another part of the country, and this is one of those examples. Our community is extremely safe, we have a good working relationship with the school department and with the town manager's office, and what we intend to do is to sit down, now that we actually know who's going to be in, in the police, in the big seat, so to speak, can sit out and we can start working cooperatively with the school department and with the superintendent and with Mr. Els and other agencies in town to craft what does the town want to do? What do we see as the priority? What does all of these peo, all of us working together cooperatively, what can we come up with to solve this? So, we are, yes, we are looking at this, it is a, it is a priority, and we do plan on having conversations about this and coming up with something for the, for the future.
Vice President Crocker?
Thank you. Chief, thank you for assuring us that the community impact unit stays together, and certainly we had great success, uh, with the community service officers walk on the street. Makes a huge difference, as we all know.
Absolutely does.
And I, I know you've been in those meetings, so I'm, uh, glad that you brought forward that information. We've had discussions in the past and budgets in the past that talk about amortization for replacement of body armor pistols, and, uh, this year it seems to be we're talking about vehicles. And, um, the vehicles, uh, we're taking at an amortization rate of eight units. I would guess you must have 45 more vehicles?
Uh, we have approximately, I don't have the exact number, approximately 20 marked, 22 marked units. We do have numerous unmarked units, that is correct. Over the past couple of years, we've been, uh, replacing unmarked units, you know. In the past, we had, uh, I think it was prior to 2008, we had 10 units that we're replacing per year to keep the turnover rate going. Um, it went down to five, and for a few years it was at five, and that was okay for a couple of years.
Yeah, but you're going to catch up.
But what happens is, now you've caught to the point where you can, you're back, we're back now, we're falling behind. We've got cars that just, you know, we've got a couple of trucks that are probably not safe to use at all, we don't even use them, but, um, that's the basic premise for this, trying to get back to where we were a few years ago before there were budget cuts and everything else.
So, the number eight closes the gap, as we're to tell me. To some degree.
To some degree. It's getting there, but we've fallen behind, to be honest with you, we have. We still got Crown Vics that are out there running around that we really shouldn't be, but...
Yes. Thank you. Uh, we, I know, uh, certainly the manager's interested in amortizing this stuff correctly, we, we need to keep you guys in good, uh, in good steady, uh, vehicles to keep you, um, on the street, so let's continue to look at this number.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Tinsley?
Question?
Second.
All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous, this is item 2018-111. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you, and while we have the BPD here, I'm going to take, uh, the grants.
Great.
Um, I'll just have you read this. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-152 under new business? I believe it's page 28 and 29.
Yes, Mr. President, under new business, 218, 2018, 152, acceptance of a fiscal year 2018 sustained traffic enforcement program step grant in the amount of $9,478.03 from the Executive Office of the Public Safety and Security Office of Grant Research Highway Safety Division, as written.
Welcome, Ann.
Thank you. Ann Spillane, Finance and Support Services Director with the Barnstable Police Department. Instead of reading this whole thing verbatim, um, I'll just, uh, do a synopsis for you. Uh, this is the second year of this grant opportunity. Um, we are one of 16 communities that were offered this grant. Uh, we originally offered it in the amount of $55,000. Uh, we are actually getting $9,478.03, a little less than what we thought. Uh, that may increase, uh, they kind of dribble these amounts out, so we may end up actually getting more than that, that's what happened last year. Um, the reason we are chosen for this grant is because we have been identified through state data collection. Uh, the Massachusetts Traffic Records Analysis Center and the Data Driven Approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety, which are data centers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for traffic crash data, um, they have identified that we have definite hotspots where there are a lot of accidents, where there are a lot of traffic problems, um, traffic safety issues, and so they are, uh, dedicating this money to, for us to target those, um, specific areas. And down at the bottom of this, you can see there, um, there's, uh, several identified intersections, Route 28 versus Way, Route 28 at Finney's Lane, Route 132 at Versus Way, Route 28 at Old Stage Road, South County Road, Route 132 at 6A, Route 28 at Lumberd Mill, Scudder Avenue in Hyannis, South Main Street in Centerville, Main Street, Centerville. That's not to say that there are not other problem areas, but these are areas where there's a lot of, uh, traffic accidents and problems. Um, so we, we go about this grant with the goal of decreasing, uh, serious traffic injuries in, specifically in those intersections, um, and, for, and, and attacking things such as just, uh, distracted driving, uh, following too close crashes are significant. Um, and we do that by simply creating a presence right in those intersections, a police presence which, um, deters people and, and kind of also helps to educate them that you, you really have to pay attention, this is an area where there's a lot of, uh, traffic activity happening, we don't want to have accidents. Um, this is a reimbursement grant, uh, there is no match required for it, and that's basically it.
Great, thank you, Ann. And thank you all for all the work you do on these grants. Counsel discussion, Counselor Flores?
Just a question. I know that the, uh, this grant is based on crash data, so obviously there are accidents that are being recorded, uh, and hence they say we're going to have it at this particular site, it looks like these are the top 10 areas in the town. And with that being said, um, I think in every precinct, uh, within the town of Barnstable, there are unofficial racetracks. Um, I know, for example, uh, in Barnstable Village and Mary Dunn Road, uh, those are definitely two, uh, unofficial racetracks. I've been in contact with, uh, Chief Sonnenbend over the years, uh, regarding that. Is there a grant, uh, available slash eligible for just speeding, if you will?
There's not a grant that we participate in that's speci, there, there's a grant that we participate in, it's a traffic enforcement grant. Speeding is among the violations that are, they do specific mobilizations on that grant. Uh, speeding, um, part of the money is dedicated to specific topics, distracted driving, driving without a seatbelt, um, drunk driving, um, and then you can use the remainder of the money as you see fit to go, speeding drivers on specific roads in areas of town. And that's the other traffic grant that we have.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Rappaport, sitting.
I just want to make a comment, I see the analysis, you're trying to, um, decrease the, uh, the number of failure to yield by 10 percent. I suggest you sit at the rotaries and do, and enforce those, that, those yield signs. Yeah. What it's worth, anyway.
I'm not sure people yield anymore. Try getting on, uh, Mid-Cape Highway, or try driving down Mid-Cape Highway and, and having people yield as, as they're entering on, they don't.
Any other counselors?
Question?
All those in favor moving the question? And this is item, uh, 2018-152, all those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous, thank you. And Vice President Crocker, you can continue on and read item 2018-153.
Thank you, Mr. President. New business may be acted upon, 2018-153, acceptance of a fiscal year 2018 grant in the amount of $5,622 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, Highway Safety Division, as written.
Second, go ahead, Ann.
So, this grant is, um, to develop and enhance effective pedestrian and bicycle enforcement, to reduce fatalities and injuries, uh, in those two specific areas. The grant targets, um, certain areas, or we've chosen to have it target certain areas, Main Street in Hyannis and, uh, streets surrounding Cape Cod Mall. Um, and it, we work on such things as crosswalk compliance, so we can, um, watch motorists who don't abide, don't respect people trying to go through the crosswalk, um, may get stopped through this grant. This allows us to, um, dedicate on an overtime basis, officers to do just that. Um, it also has an aspect of, or what we've chosen to do with the money is to, um, also work around the Sturgis Charter School and the Barnstable High School at the beginning of the school year to encourage students to use the crosswalks and don't just dart across the street, and to encourage motors to respect students walking across those crosswalks. Um, this year, uh, they're also, uh, added a component, we're buying 40, uh, bicycle helmets to be used at, at Kids' Day, to, to give out at Kids' Day. And this is a, there is no match required for this, and this is a reimbursement grant.
Great, thank you, Ann. Any counsel discussion? Uh, Counselor Tinsley?
Just a, a very quick comment, I wanted to say, Main Street in Hyannis is perfect. Coming to this meeting, I had to lay on my horn to a car passing me on the right as I slowed down for someone coming across the crosswalk that's just before the library returned left. It was ridiculous, so nicely done.
Counselor Beedenbender?
I, I think I, I noticed that this, uh, includes education in it, um, and one of the things that I'm very concerned about with cyclists are, uh, a lot of, so, folks that come, come here with H2B visas, they come from different countries, different cultures, different rules of the road, they don't wear bike helmets, they can ride any direction they want, so I, I have often seen someone that, you know, is coming towards me, is driving against me in traffic, no helmet, are, is there any way to sort of, I, you know, sort of do an educational component for folks coming here temporarily who aren't familiar with how we do things here, um, to educate them as to what they should be doing when they, they come to this country?
We have done that in the past, uh, we've worked with some of the agencies that they're coming through and some of the educational organizations that they're coming through. Unfortunately, this grant will not allow us to use that money for that, but we have, needless to say, we have done that in the past.
Okay, thank you.
And it is important, you're absolutely right.
Any other counselors?
Move the question?
I have a second, all those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous, this is item 2018-153, all those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thanks again, Ann, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, we're going to take another item under old business, I'm going to invite the, the airport to come up, we've got Airport Manager Bud Brialt and, um, Assistant Airport Manager Katie Service. Uh, Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-146 and open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President. Old business, public hearing, majority vote necessary. 2018-146 appropriation transfer order in the amount of $100,000 for the fiscal year 2018 airport capital budget for the purpose of funding various airport capital improvement projects, as written.
May I have a second? Bud, this is really it, this is really the last time.
This is the last one. Uh, 20 days and I'll wake up.
20 days?
So, I just, I wanted to take this opportunity before we start our presentation to, uh, number one, introduce, uh, the soon-to-be new Assistant Airport Manager, Matt Eelia. He's a very welcome addition.
Welcome.
Appreciate that very much.
(applause)
And my other thing I wanted to do was to say thank you to the Mr. President, Vice President, and the rest of the members of the council, and this esteemed council and other past esteemed councils for all your support to me and the airport, and I appreciate it very much. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Katie for the presentation.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President Counselors, for having us here tonight to move over the project, um, at hand. On April 26th, the Town Council approved an appropriation and transfer order for $449,900 to fund four capital improvement plant, planned projects at the airport. Of the $449,900, 80 percent of that was going to be received, uh, funding for that was being received from Mastah Aeronautics Division, uh, through a grant from that, uh, division for those projects. The Massachusetts, um, Aeronautics Division had about $3.5 million that they had to use or lose by June 30th of this year. So, they reached out to their 36 public-use airports, they asked us to present a number of projects that were project-ready, shovel-ready projects that we could move forward with, and within two hours, I sent them 10. We had, um, I had written documentation of the projects, justification for each project, and I put forward all 10 to see what would shake loose. They came back to us and they said, "We will do five projects at your airport." With that being said, we came to you in April in... With that being said, we came to you in April and asked for funding for four of those projects because only 80% was going to be funded for those projects, and the Barnstable Airport had to fund the additional 20%. One of those projects, the annual airfield painting project, 100% was paid for by the state, and we've already started that project. Tonight's request is for additional funds for one of those four projects, for the hangar two drainage project. The hangar two project, or the hangar two location, is in the north ramp of the airfield. It is an airport-owned building that is leased by Cape Air for their IT, human resources, and training center. It is also the location of their Cessna 402 flight simulator. The building itself is located about one and a half feet lower than the rest of the buildings on the north ramp. We have experienced significant flooding issues over the past several years, and as we've discussed earlier this evening, because of changes in our environment, we are seeing more and more of these storms that are coming through that are causing some flooding problems for areas on the Cape as well as elsewhere on the coast. The project originally was presented to you as a CIP project that would occur over a five-year period, but with the March initiation from Mastar of looking for projects, they said, "We will take care of the entire project, do it in one year," and actually we come out a little bit cheaper than what we had anticipated. To date, the airport has installed French drain systems around the building as part of Phase 1. We've installed new catch basins, and we have also installed a temporary earthen berm that has helped keep this building a little bit drier. As you can see from the pictures up on the slide, this has been an occurrence for that particular location on three separate occasions within the past year and a half. During the April 26th public hearing and between, excuse me, let me back up, between the first reading for this project and the April 26th public hearing, the airport, through the pre-bid process, found out that the $241,900 for the project that was estimated would most likely not address all of the flooding issues that we had hoped. It was a difference between addressing a 25-year storm versus a 50-year storm. An additional $100,000 was required for full build-out. That would include, as we had mentioned during our last meeting, the implementation of one more underground storage system, stormwater storage system, at the amount of 94, just over $94,000, and sanitary sewer hookup that was just over $5,300. We had talked in April that at some point in time, we were going to hook up the last remaining building on the north ramp to sanitary sewer. Right now, they do not have that available to them. And the thought process by discussing this with Town Council was, "Don't go back and rip up brand-new pavement that you've just put in in another five years. Do it at this time. It's probably a little bit cheaper." And it is cheaper. When we initially looked at the sanitary sewer project to do that alone, it was about $19,000, and as part of this project, it was much reduced because of the pavement that was already going to be torn apart to do the stormwater storage system. As per direction from Town Council on the 26th hearing, Town Council directed the airport to take a look at our reserves and to see if we can take that $100,000 from our reserves to move forward with this project, to get it done and get it completed right the first time. Town Council also directed the airport to request additional funding from Mastar Aeronautics and from other funding, such as Cape Air and Griffin Avionics, who are affected by this flooding. On three separate occasions, we have reached out to Mastar and asked them if they could supply the additional $100,000 for this project. Unfortunately, on those three occasions, they have denied our request. However, on my last conversation with them this week, they said, "Keep trying. There are other projects in the state that are not as advanced as you are, and perhaps there might be some money that we can shake loose." But that was not a promise. So I don't want anybody to get their hopes up. It's still something that, right now, we're hoping to pay for. On two separate occasions, I've asked for help through Cape Air and Griffin Avionics for that additional $100,000 to see if they can assist us, and I am still awaiting a response from them. Therefore, this evening, we're back in front of you tonight to ask for your request to fund, to approve funding of $100,000 for that continuation of that project. And I don't know, Bud, if you have any other comments or questions?
No, I have nothing further.
I have nothing further, so if you have questions?
Okay. Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none to have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Counselor Flores.
Just a quick question. On that café patio indoor addition, is that at the front of the building?
It is at the front of the building.
Do you have to break through that wall of where that window is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel O'Neary.
Just a refresher. These projects, I think, had to be established, earmarked, and completed by a certain date. What was the finish date on that?
June 30th.
So we need to act on this. There's no going back to Cape Air and Griffin Aeronautics, and probably it's not in their best interests should you determine that you're going to pay for it and try to get reimbursement of any kind from them, I would assume.
I am still working that angle.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I remember right, at our last discussion, you gave us an estimate. Cape Air and Griffin rents this facility, is that correct? It's owned by the airport.
The hangar two, the building that has seen major flooding, is owned by the airport and rented by Cape Air. Cape Air has assisted us in the Phase 1 part of the project to help reduce the drainage issues, which was done in fiscal year 2017. Griffin Avionics, their building is owned by them. They have not experienced the flooding, but they do lease another parcel from us, which is the last parcel that does not have sanitary sewer, and they rent that out to another tenant. So that is the last parcel. We would like that to be hooked up to sanitary sewer as well.
So, but what we had talked about is, when this gets flooded, the damage was substantial, and the cleanup was substantial. So we had already kind of determined that it was to everyone's advantage if we spend this money, fix it, rather than keep losing money at the repairs.
That is correct.
It's like sand getting washed away at the beach.
That is, that is correct. To date, Cape Air has spent about $50,000 on cleanup, and we have also spent money with overtime for our staff and personnel.
So it's time to stop the bleeding.
Correct. Thanks.
What else? Vice President Crocker?
I guess we need to take this in bites again, so we're clear. When we were talking to you in April, we were talking about a repair for the pictures we saw, and we all had to reconcile that that was more than a 25-year flood impact, 25-year calculated flood impact. And so then we started saying, "Well, you're talking about cutting the drainage back, so you really got to get the right amount of drainage to solve your problem."
Correct.
But we never talked about what else needs to be done under the macadam at that time. So now, we're coming for 100 grand. We are going to bump it from the 25 to the 50-year storm.
Correct.
And while we get the asphalt up, we're going to run this line through it and prepare for the expansion to the last building that cuts through the process.
Correct. And we had talked about that in April as being something that we should probably, at first, we thought that we would stay at the $241,000, just because we knew where our reserves were, and we wanted to get as much as we could get for that estimate. And we had had a lengthy conversation at that point, that just get it done, try to fix it now because of the bleed that we're experiencing.
Well, I'm an advocate for doing it right the first time, but I'm a little concerned that whoever calculated the storm amount of surge that we had, that they now know that the 50-year, because there is 25, 50, and 100-year storm surges, that the 50-year storm surge will prevent that building from getting wet in the future. So who ran the calculations to describe the size of the storage you would need to take the water off of the macadam?
Our environmental engineers are Horsley-Witten Group, and they have been the ones that have been working with us on all of our stormwater drainage systems. Any project that we have looked at at the airport, they're the ones who've designed the drainage for our systems. So they did the design for the 50-year storm.
And let's be clear one more time. The 50-year storm is what they calculated was the last storm surge that caused problems in that area.
I, go ahead.
Well, with 100, you would have, you would have, it would only come up once in 100, which is even a greater amount. So we're trying to solve what we saw in the pictures. But Horsley-Witten is telling us that what we saw in the pictures occurs once every 50 years, and that was the 50-year drainage. And so for that reason, that's what we're putting in the ground, not 100-year drainage. We're putting in 50.
Correct.
And then we're running with the sewer line as an alternative, because we got the macadam all ripped up, and now's the time to do it.
Correct.
Because if we took the 100 and put 100-year storm drainage in, that would be one solution to one of the two problems, because you don't have a septic problem right now, but it is prudent to run the sewer line over there, even though there, you haven't told us that you have a septic system in failure in that last building.
We, for the septic system, it's been a system that hasn't been in use for, is five years a good estimate, Bud?
It's been several years. We're not really sure when it failed, but the septic system has failed. And so the system has been capped for a couple of years now. And Griffin and the airport have been trying to work together on a funding arrangement to get it fixed, and we could never come to an agreement, so this was an opportune time for us to do it at a fairly cheap price.
So we're opening something that we hadn't talked about in the April meeting. So you're telling me there's no viable flushing or sewer in that building at this time?
That's correct.
Wow. So this is the way to choose to spend the money. Okay. I like the fact that we're talking about what should be done while the macadam's up. That's definitely the way that you're going to handle these projects. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other counselors? All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. And this is item 2018-146. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you both, and Bud, don't be a stranger. Hope to see you.
I will not. I'll come up and talk up there, and I'll log in and speak to you at future times. As a resident of the town of Barnstable, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to invite up our Finance Director, Mark Milne, who's going to take us through the rest of our budget items. I've saved you for the end, Mark, because you're like that fast guy at the end of a relay race.
The Federal Express guy, the auctioneer, all the people we enjoy hearing from.
You're perfect at 10:00 PM to make up ground.
He's called, he's called the anchor.
The anchor, right. Counselor Levesque. Could you please read, this is under Old Business, item 2018-126, and open the public hearing? I believe it's on page six or seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, number 2018-126, appropriation order in the amount of $275,682 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Town Council budget. Majority vote.
I have a second. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, counselors. Mark Milne, Director of Finance. For Town Council's budget this year, we're looking at a $7,997 increase. There's no significant changes to this budget, other than the cost increase for contractual obligations, operating expenses are held level. This budget includes all of the salaries and expense allowances for the Town Council, as well as a continuation of 1.4 full-time equivalents for your operation. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none to have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel Flores has left the, and Counsel Hebert are off the dais. Counsel discussion on this item? All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-126. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Schnepp, could you please read item 2018-127 and open the public hearing?
Old Business, public hearing for a majority vote. Item number 2018-127, Town Manager Budget, appropriation order in the amount of $671,810 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Town Manager Budget, Town Manager Department.
I have a second. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. The Town Manager's fiscal year 19 proposed budget is increasing $21,796 to 3.4% due to contractual obligations. The funding is provided for five and a half full-time equivalents, which includes two positions being transferred from the Administrative Services Department as part of the FY19 reorganization. Taxes provide about 66% of the funding for this operation, and the proposed budget is approximately the same size as it was back in fiscal year 15, so it hasn't grown since then.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none to have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? I have a second. All those in favor of closing, moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-127. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Beedenbender, could you please read item 2018-128 and open the public hearing, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, public hearing by majority vote. This is item number 2018-128, appropriation order in the amount of $6,810,8 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Administrative Services Department budget.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by recognizing a few staff members here who are part of the Administrative Services Department. Behind me, we have our Town Comptroller, Susan O'Connor, our Town Treasurer, Deborah Blanchett, Director of Property and Risk Management, David Anthony, Director of Human Resources, Bill Cole, and I'm not sure of Director of IT, Dan, Dan, you are here. There you are, Dan Wood, our Director of Assessing, Ed O'Neill, and, who am I forgetting? And a person who needs no introduction, our Town Attorney, Ruth Wile. The Administrative Services Department budget is increasing $135,000, or 2.3%. This budget includes funding for 56 and a half full-time positions, which is one less than the fiscal year 18 budget. Personnel costs are increasing $92,000 due to contractual obligations, as well as adding one full-time purchasing agent position. Two full-time positions in the assessing operations have been eliminated, resulting in a savings of $98,000. Our Director of Assessing has reevaluated the workflow in that operation, has reorganized the staff and the work processes, and we are able to continue to provide the same level of service with two less positions. Operating costs will increase by $43,000 due to the annual increases in our software licensing contracts, as well as $28,000 for our outside contract services for our assessing operations, which, this is offset by a $6,000 reduction in one-time costs in the Town Clerk's office, which are going away. Our capital outlay budget will remain level-funded to support information technologies, software and hardware upgrades, and taxes provide about 51% of the funding for this operation. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none to have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Counsel Hebert.
Thank you, Mark. What is the total number of personnel that we have within this division?
Fifty-six and a half.
Thank you.
The half is a very short employee. Counselor Flores.
I'd like to commend Assessor O'Neill for restructuring the office, but I'm just curious, with those two less positions, those full-time equivalents, were those folks that lost positions, or were they reassigned to other jobs, or what happened there?
They were reassigned to other positions within, actually, assessing operations, because we had some people leave, resignations. And so we were able to backfill them, put them into the other positions, and basically eliminate their old positions.
So there was a net minus two, but no one lost a position?
No one lost a job.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Any other councilors?
Who have a question?
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-128. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018-129 and open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President, Old Business, public hearing, item 2018-129, this is Employee Benefits, appropriation order in the amount of $22,788,710 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Employee Benefits Budget as written.
Second. Go ahead, Mark.
The proposed budget is increasing 5.2%, or $1,251,000. The good news is, our retirement system had positive experience in their return on their assessments, or their assets. And the actuarial projections were calling for a 5.3% increase, but the actual increase ended up being closer to 3.4% as a result of the positive return on the system's assets. So, some positive news there. Health insurance plan rates continue to outpace inflation. We see an increase in health insurance of $848,000. Workers' compensation and unemployment costs will remain level. There's no increase there. Our Medicare tax will increase correspondingly with the increase in wages applicable to those taxes. And about taxes provide about 88% of funding for this operation. The retired teachers' health insurance costs, which we must budget for, however, does not have to be appropriated. So, we reduce the budget of $28,5,282 by $2,494,000, and that gives us the appropriation amount of $22,788, or $22,788,000. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Counsel Schnep.
Thank you. Mark, is the town starting to consider funding our OPEB liability?
Yes, we are. We, we have started, we have close to $3 million in a trust fund for that. This budget includes another half a million dollar contribution. We've been increasing that $50,000 a year for several years now.
So, what line item does that show up in?
It's in health insurance for active employees, retired employees, excuse me, retired health and sick benefits.
Okay. So, so total, we have three million. What's our, what's our liability at?
$180 million.
Okay, thank you.
But we're no different than anybody else.
I know.
A little better, actually, because we have a trust.
Counsel Rap Grissette?
I have a question, Mark. Are the eligible employees of the town required to join Medicare?
Yes, they are. When they turn 65, they must.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Question?
All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-129. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Wallace, could you please read item 2018-130 and open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President. This is Old Business, open for a public hearing, item number 2018-130, Debt Service, appropriation order in the amount of $9,996,301 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 General Fund Debt Service Budget.
I have a second. Mark, would you like to give us the rationale, please?
Thank you. The proposed budget is increasing 5.2%, or about $496,000 as a result of the 2008 bond issue, fiscal year 18 bond issue, to fund our capital improvement plan. The town received $3 million in mass school building assistance in FY19 to offset this cost, representing about 30% of the budget. Good news is about, this budget's going to go down over $3 million next year. It's the last year of our high school debt payment for the renovation of that project.
Terrific.
Yeah, happy to answer any questions.
We're in a public hearing. Any of the public wish to come forward and be heard? Hearing none, I'll take a motion. Motion to close the public hearing in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. Counsel discussion on the matter?
Question?
Motion to move the question. All those, and a second. All those in favor moving the question? Thank you very much. I'm looking for a vote on 2018-130. All those in favor as written, please. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Please record it. Let's see, I'll just paperwork. I believe I'm down to Counsel Flores for 2018-131.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Crocker. This is Old Business. It is a public hearing, and it is a majority vote, item 2018-131. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $2,900,000 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Library and Tourism Grant Budget as written.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Mark, please, the rationale.
Thank you. The proposed budget increases the grant for the Seven Village Libraries by 3%. This level of funding will allow them to continue to participate in the state aid to library grant program. The tourism grant is level funded. Funding for the grants are provided from taxes, rooms taxes, as well as property taxes. A portion of the town's rooms tax is used to fund the tourism grant.
Terrific. We are open in a public hearing. Would any of the public like to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, councilors? Would you like to move to close the public hearing? And a second? Please record the first and the second. Councilors, any discussion? Counsel Hebert, you're all set? Thank you very much.
Second.
Motion to move it and second it. All those in favor of the move in the question? Thank you very much. Now, a vote on the question, 2018-131, please. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, abstentions, please record it, unanimous. Counsel Dagwan, please, 132.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant President. I'd like to open for a public hearing, item 2018-132, appropriation order in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of funding the town fiscal year 2019 Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Counsel Dagwan, second. Thank you. Record the first and the second. Mark?
Thank you. The Chapter 40, Section 5A allows towns to set aside up to 5% of the preceding fiscal year's tax levy in, in a reserve fund for extraordinary and unforeseen expenditures. This is the first time we're doing this for the town of Barnstable. The reason why we're doing this is that it can make us, help us respond to emergency situations more quickly. Currently, it require, subsequent appropriation requires two readings and a 30-day waiting period under our charter, so it could take more than 60 days for a department to receive funding to respond to an emergency situation, similar to what we had at Sandy Neck this past year. This will allow us to respond much more quickly to an event such, such as that. No direct drafts can be made against this fund by any department. They must come before you for a request for a transfer.
Terrific, thank you. We are in a public hearing. Would any of the public like to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, councilors, would you like to close the public hearing? Second, please. First and second. And all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Thank you very much. Any abstentions? Counselors, what's your opinion? What would you, what would you like to do? Yes, Counsel Neri, you got your hand up. You're the, you're the go-to guy.
Just had one question, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Did you say that this, this has never been done before?
Yeah, we have, we have always used our general fund reserves as our emergency reserve. So, when something came up extraordinary or unforeseen, we'd come before the council, and we, it would require two readings, and then a 30-day waiting period. So, this just allows us to respond more quickly. It's the first time we've done it this way.
Makes sense.
Counselors, any further discussion? Yes, Counsel Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just, just as the procedures and logistics, was there talk that the manager could, does it have to go in front of us, or can there be a decision made by the town manager that, I guess we don't normally spend money that fast, so.
You should see what happens behind the walls.
Thank you.
It, it does require the council, it has to come before the council, but we can get something submitted to you, I think, three days before your, your actual meeting.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing no further questions, I'll call for the vote. We'll shortcut that one. Uh, uh, I already called for the vote. Come on now, let me shortcut. I'm calling for the vote on 2018-132. All those in favor? Any abstentions? Any to the negative? Thank you. Counsel Neri, would you take 133, please?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. This is Old Business, public hearing requiring a majority vote. Item number 2018-133, Insurance Assessments, Transfers, and Other Fixed Costs. This appropriation order in the, in the amount of $15,597,999 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Insurance Assessments, Transfers, and Other Fixed Cost Budget as written.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. The Regional School District assessment is increasing $147,000, and the assessment has grown from $2.8 million in fiscal year 15 to $3.7 million in fiscal year 19. An additional $15,000 is provided in the celebrations funding for Unity Day, and $50,000 for insurance to cover the projected premium increases. 80% of this budget is provided from taxes. The $3.2 million growth in the budget since fiscal year 15 is largely due to additional funds committed to our capital program, which has grown from $7.4 million annually to $9.5 million annually. The $19 million budget, you've already approved back on May 3, a $4 million transfer from our general fund reserve. So, we're asking tonight for an additional appropriation of $15,597,000 to fund all these costs. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All the, all those in favor closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Anyone?
Who have a question?
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-133. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Hebert, could you please read item 2018-134 and open the public hearing, please?
This is, again, a public hearing with a majority vote, item number 2018-134, Community Preservation Fund Administration, the Community Preservation Fund Administration Expenses and Fiscal Year 2019 Program Set Asides.
Second.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee is here tonight. If we have any questions for either one of us. Annually, we're required to appropriate the annual debt service for the Community Preservation Fund, as well as an administrative budget for the Community Preservation Committee. Also, we're required to set aside a minimum amount of money for each of the three program areas. So, to do this, we, we look at what the projected revenues are for the upcoming fiscal year. We're projecting a $3,558,000 SRTAX, combined with an estimated state match of 11% for next year, gives us about $3,939,000 for the Community Preservation Fund's estimated revenues. The first thing we have to do is set aside amount, the first $2 million to cover the land bank debt service. That's outstanding. That leaves us with $1,925,000 for administration and program, the three program areas. We're proposing a budget of $150,000, once again, for the Community Preservation Committee's administration budget. That has been consistent since the beginning of the program. We could go as high as $197,000. Reducing the available revenue by the administration budget leaves us $1,775,000 for the three program areas. A minimum of 10% of the total revenues must be set aside for each one of those program areas. That's 10% of the total estimated revenues, $3,939,000. So, that means $393,000 is set aside for each program area. That only comes to $1,181,000, which is less than the available revenue. The balance of $593,000 will be set aside in a budget reserve, and that can be used for any one of the three program areas going forward. The debt service for next year totals $2,107,000. $93,000 of that will come from the Historic Preservation Reserve to pay for the debt service that was issued to rehabilitate the exterior of this building. And the land bank debt service that was brought forward from that old, old program that was converted to the Community Preservation Fund will be provided from the current year revenues, and it totals $2,107,000.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Counsel Flores.
Thank you, Mark. Just a question on the $150,000 appropriation for administrative expenses. Can you break that down for us?
Yes, they have a part-time admini, administration, a staff administrator, which is about $25,000 of the budget. The balance of the budget is used for expenses like appraisals, outside legal counsel, if they have to get outside legal counsel. They have not spent that, to that level any year. Any balance that remains unexpended goes right back into the Community Preservation Fund's reserves. But we want to give them the flexibility in the event that there are, there's an uptick in activity, they need to have the funds to address the studies that need to be done, the appraisals that need to be done, things like that.
On average, how much is the $150,000 per year expended?
I would say about 2/3 of it.
2/3, okay. Thank you.
Counsel Schnep?
Thank you. How many years left on the land bank debt?
2023, I think it is. It goes out. It's not too far. We, we have a big drop-off in '23, and '24, and '25, I believe. So, it's, it's coming close.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Who have a question?
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-134. All, all those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Tinsley, could you please read item 2018-135 and open the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Old Business, open to a public hearing, item 2018-135, appropriation order in the amount of $2,107,952 for the purpose of paying the fiscal year 2019 Community Preservation Fund Debt Service Requirements as written.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
This is the second one, two of two. The first one was the minimum set asides in the administration budget. This is the debt service that we just spoke about, $2,107,000. $93,000 of it will be provided from the Reserve for Historic Preservation, and the balance will come from the current year revenues.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item?
Question?
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-135. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Levesque, could you please read item 2018-136 and open the public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, open to a public hearing, item number 2018-136, changes to Chapter 86, Article 3 of the General Ordinances as written.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Due to the reorganization proposed as part of the fiscal year 19 operating budget, several changes are needed to the town's existing ordinance on revolving funds. Three revolving funds are no longer used, the Adult Social Day, the building permits, and the police training funds, and others are moved to new departments requiring this change. In addition, a new revolving fund for asset management has been created.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Please note, Counsel Rap Grissette has left the dais. Counsel discussion on this item? Counsel Schnep.
Thank you. Mark, in, in this item, the Asset Management Fund is described as the proceeds coming from the sale of the tax-foreclosed property. It doesn't really articulate the expenditures. And I know that in the next item, it's budgeted a limit of $1 million. Could you give some idea of what might be included?
Yes, under section...
Yes, under Section 86-8, Operation and Procedures, Item Number 6, it's to be used for the support and promotion of any expenditure related to the town's comprehensive asset management program.
So, what does that mean?
Any expenditure we need to incur to, whether it's an appraisal, an acquisition, costs associated with potential disposal of something, anything that's related to a management of a piece of property.
But it wouldn't be used for actual management of the property? It's just in terms of... So, $1 million is kind of a big number for that activity?
You know, we don't know what it's going to be yet because we're just embarking upon this. So, this is just establishing a threshold. But until we have some experience with the activities associated with this program, we put a number in there that gives us some flexibility and allows us then to review that on an annual basis and adjust it accordingly.
So, as a revolving fund, the council doesn't have as much purview over those expenditures?
No, this will be the town manager. This one falls under the town manager. You set the expenditure threshold every year.
Right.
As with all revolving funds. And then the department managers are responsible for staying within the expenditure limitation or the amount of revenue they generate, whatever is less. So, if they only generate $100,000 for this program, that's all that can be spent.
So, the most recent sale of assets was over half a million dollars, right?
Over half a million dollars. What was the amount of the bids? Yes. What we will actually see from the closing of those, we don't know yet. But we're working towards establishing all of the purchase and sale agreements associated with that.
And what expenses do you feel will be put against that revenue?
Any expense associated with, if we have to decide to, perhaps, maybe we need to make some improvements to a property in order to make it more marketable if we wanted to sell it? Something like that, or an appraisal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Vice President Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may assist in the discussion, it is a discussion that was taken on by the asset management and the actual amount was asked to be lifted to a million so that it would work with liquidating a great amount of the assets that have been stagnant for years. The first phase that went out were a phase that we believed had the best titles. So, we expect a great amount of funds to be spent in the future legally to clean up the titles to then bring in whatever funds may be the net of the work. So, there is a great amount of work to be done to clear the table and put these back on the tax roll. So, that was the intended purpose when we asked it to be raised from 500 to a million. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Do I have a motion to move the question? All those in favor moving the question? That is unanimous. This is item 2018-136. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Schnep, could you please read item 2018-137 and open the public hearing?
This is old business for public hearing, majority vote. Item 2018-137. Revolving Funds Fiscal Year 2019 Revolving Funds Spending Limits.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. This is what you'll be required to do every year going forward. We won't be changing the ordinance unless we create a new revolving fund. These are the spending limits. The department managers have to stay within the spending limits again or within the amount of revenue they actually generate, whatever is less. The only change is here in dollar amounts is the recreation program. We increased that slightly based on increased activity we're seeing there. And the Consumer Protection Fund, we increased that slightly based on the activity in that program. That's the Waits and Measures Program.
Great, thank you, and this is a public hearing. So, any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Counsel Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, on the Consumer Protection Fund, $400,000, what do we actually do with that fund?
That covers the salaries and benefits of the employees who conduct the Regional Waits and Measures Inspections Program. We inspect, do the sealer of weights and measures. We do a lot of other communities besides Barnstable as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Flores?
So, the folks who were employed in that particular division, they fund their own salaries, not by the town at all?
Yes, it's funded with the fees that we generate from that program.
Totally, okay. Thank you.
Any other counselors? All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-137. All those in favor of this item? And that is... Anyone opposed? One abstention. All right, thank you, Mark, and that ends the fiscal 2019 operating budget. So, I'll see you guys next year. Well, congratulations, everyone. We got through that. A few more items left on the agenda tonight. I wanted to invite up Lindsey Council, the Chair of the CPC Committee. And where do we leave off? Counselor Beedenbender, could you please read item 2018-148 and open the public hearing, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business referred to public hearing. This is item number 2018-148. The appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $195,000 of Community Preservation Funds for creation and acquisition of conservation restriction, 2.18 acres, plus or minus 3,600 Falmouth Road, Marston's Mills, MAP 77, Parcel 5.
Go ahead. Good to see you.
Thank you very much, Council President Steinheilber. The Barnstable Land Trust, BLT, is seeking approval from the Town Council through the Town Manager for Community Preservation Act Open Space and Recreation Funds in the amount of $195,000 for the acquisition of a conservation restriction for 3,600 Falmouth Road, Marston's Mills, MAP 077, Parcel 005. This funding request represents a portion of the total $287,500 needed by BLT to purchase and create and the town to acquire a conservation restriction with $12,500 to be funded by BLT and $80,000 awarded in a state conservation partnership grant with the condition that conveyance of the land and conservation restriction occurs prior to August 15, 2018. Here tonight is Janet Milkman with a PowerPoint presentation to describe the project.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Janet Milkman, Executive Director of the Barnstable Land Trust. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight about this purchase of the Sprinkle property, 3,600 Falmouth Road. I'm sure many of you have driven by it. Let me see if I can make it. Thank you. Okay, so, this slide shows where the property is. It's just about at the corner of 149 and 28, right next to the Herring Run on Mill Pond. Just on the south end of the pond, the north end has a big chunk of townland. And then, the site is also across 149 and also across 28 from a significant amount of other land that's conservation land that BLT owns and is part of an important corridor, the Marston's Mills River, that is critical for both the estuary and also drinking water. The parcel is important because of its location on the pond. It's a significant amount of pond frontage. It's a gateway to the village. It's one of the most photographed ponds in the village, if not the town, and along a really busy intersection, as I said before. It's very much of environmental significance and that is the reason that we've been able to secure an $80,000 state grant, in part because much of the land is in state-designated biomap-two-court habitat and also priority habitat and is the host of two rare species, the eastern box turtle and the bridle shiner, which is a fish. And purchase of this property for conservation would basically be undevelopment. It would be the removal of two houses and two septic systems that are now going into the watershed right there. It would also allow us to eliminate the two curb cuts on Route 28 and help implement the Village Vision Plan by protecting another link in the sidewalk from the Village Center to the Catuit Landing, the Stop &amp; Shop Mall. Also, an opportunity for those already visiting the Herring Run to take a walk to the top of the property through a trail, which we have done a preliminary drawing of. It's the brown line there. The red line is an existing trail that goes right along the pond front. The brown line was drawn really to allow for a fairly easy walking trail. There's a pretty significant hill in the property, so it goes sort of closer to the pond and then provides the opportunity for a couple of different benches for a view over the pond. The project has the support of the Marston's Mills Village Association and the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition. The original partnership that we developed with the town on this, the notion was that the town would own it. The purchase price was $325,000. The CPC request was $382,000. And we were on the waitlist for the state grant and we had not gotten review by the Historic Commission. Almost a year later, everything's changed. We now have BLT as the owner of the property. The purchase price is $245,000, reducing our request to CPC to $205,000 in part due to the fact that in April, we were notified that we would be eligible for a state grant for $80,000 if we could close by June 30th. And that's the reason for the request for a speedy hearing in front of you all. And we've also, the owner has also gotten permission from the Historic Commission to demolish the structures. And that is where we are now.
Thank you very much, and this is a public hearing. So, if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward.
First, I'd like to congratulate Janet on her first big project before the Town Council. Jackie Barton, Executive Director, former Executive Director of the Barnstable Land Trust, member of the Village of Catuit and someone who drives by this property just about every single day. This piece of property has been on the town's priority list since 1985. It is the gateway, really, to the Village of Marston's Mills. It's on the pond. Jan, I think, mentioned the fact that it's important for the potential dredging of the pond. The town has already made a significant investment with land bank funds on this property. And our goal, really, at the Land Trust is to improve public access from probably the most heavily-used and photographed area in the town of Barnstable, that Mill Pond. So, I actively encourage you to support Janet in her first project at Barnstable Land Trust. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's just one question because I'm not as familiar with land acquisition and purchasing. Why the change in ownership from town to the Land Trust? Is that for the grant or...?
No, I think it was, and I'll let the Town Manager jump in if he would like to. But I think that the idea was the town can have access to, can get what it needs out of the property without being the owner. And with the whole interest in, you know, rethinking assets and asset management, I think that was part of the change. So, there will be an agreement with the town to allow for dredging of the pond and to allow for storage of dredging materials on the site. But BLT will be responsible for managing the property and building the trail.
Counselor Levesque.
Hi, Janet. Thanks so much. Yeah, I know you worked really hard on this project and thank you for all the information and the times you've met with the village associations. Really appreciate it. And I know, again, I know you put a lot of hard work into this project to collaborate and, you know, address the issues that came before you. And this is kind of my first rodeo as well, as far as land acquisition goes. And so, I appreciate you educating myself as going through the process. And I look forward to it. I look forward to more collaboration. And like I think, I think it's a win-win. So, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Raporessi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do drive by this almost on a daily basis and it'll be really nice to see it demolished. And I know it went through historic, is historic house. And I see you're putting a marker there to make reference to it. And you're going to close up both curb cuts. I have a question with regard to CPC funding. Did the funding you receive, is that going to be used to demolish the building? Because I know there's been some questions on whether or not CPC funds could be used to demolish historic buildings. Can someone answer that for me?
The Town Attorney, David. Welcome, David.
Thank you very much. Good evening. It's been a little while. I think the question's been asked, can CPC funds be used for demolition? The answer to that is yes. Will they be used for demolition in this project? The funding, the amount requested includes that. So, they may and it's very likely that they will in the form of reimbursement.
If I could follow up. So, an historic building, as long as it's approved by the Historical Commission to be demolished, CPC funds can be used to demolish an historic asset? Is that correct?
They could, yes, they could.
They could be. Okay, thank you. And just to follow up with BLT, what's your timeline on removal? And are you going to be responsible for removing it? Not the previous owner or Mr. Sprinkle?
Yes, BLT will be responsible and the timeframe is ASAP. So, you know, ideally by the fall.
Vice President Crocker.
Thank you, thank you very much. Obviously, we have a very large project going on between the Mill Pond all the way down through the Prince Cove, all the way out to the two cuts. We've been working on for a couple of years. We're taking core samples. We really have a clear understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. The two items that you spoke to that were very positive for me were that a lot of the properties owned into the pond and we've had some issue of whether or not we'd be able to dredge that. And you're telling me today that we would not be restricted from dredging it with an agreement between us. The second issue you told me is that we could store spoilage there and we would not be restricted from storing spoilage there.
Right.
And the last question I need you to affirm for me. We, after it's all done, the Herring Run, the lockup, walk-up, it seems to be in need of a repair and it may alter the path somewhat, which may alter some of the use of the land on the coastline getting into the pond. So, could you assure me that we would not have to have an act of legislative body or the Congress to make sure we can build, when we're done putting this back together, build a successful Herring Run ladder to go back into the pond?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other counselors? Counselor Flores.
Serving on the Asset Management Committee, our role basically is to get things back on the tax rolls so we generate revenue. In this case, we're doing the opposite. We're taking something off to diminish it. And I think it's a noble goal that we're doing it. I'm just curious, what has been the tax basis for this piece of property on an annual basis that we will be taking out of collections, if you will?
I think it's about $262,500. That's the assessment.
I'm asking taxes.
You want the taxes?
Just curious. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other counselors?
Was... I'd have to question it.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
I had a motion to move the question. Do I have a second? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 20... This is item 2018-148. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. And while you're here, we're going to skip ahead. Counselor Rap Grissette, would you please read item 2018-162?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under new business may be acted upon, 2018-162, approve the conservation restriction between Barnstable Land Trust, Inc., the grantor, and the compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trust grantee. Resolve that Town Council approve the conservation restriction between Barnstable Land Trust, Inc., grantor, and the compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trust grantee over approximately 4.07 acres of land on Zero Peppercorn Lane map, 16 parcel 029 lot 002, and 35 Peppercorn Lane map, 16 parcel 029 lot 001, for the purposes of preserving open space, water quality, and rare species habitat, as written.
Do I have a second? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to invite Mark Robinson from the Compact up here to do the, give you a little presentation.
Question now. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is Mark Robinson from Katuut. I am the Executive Director of the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts. And we're here tonight to elicit your support for a conservation restriction on two parcels of land on Peppercorn, Peppercorn Lane, which is at the far south end of Katuut. The Posehn family is proposing, or is donating these two lots to the Barnstable Land Trust for conservation. I've got a very simple schematic here I can pass around, just showing how this, these lots are across Peppercorn Lane from a very interesting habitat, the Atlantic White Cedar Swamp. We have five of them in Katuut. This is one of the larger ones, and that's a rare species habitat. Atlantic White Cedar swamps were prevalent throughout the Cape through most of our history until cranberries could be cultivated. And we cut them all down, made cranberry bogs, which are good, too. But the few surviving native Atlantic White Cedar swamps are very important habitats. And so these two little lots are draining into the swamp and are very important environmental So the Poseens are donating these two properties to the Barnstable Land Trust. Under the state tax credit law, they are, the Barnstable Land Trust is required to put an overlay of protection in the form of a perpetual conservation restriction on these two lots to be held by a qualified organization. My organization, the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trust, is a qualified organization. So this will be, in a sense, a belt and suspenders that is preferred by the state to make sure that land that goes into conservation stays in conservation, has a belt and suspenders approach to preserving that land. So we're here tonight to ask the council to approve the conservation restriction under chapter 131 of the, I'm sorry, 184. It's too late in the evening. Chapter 184, section 31 through 33 of the Mass General Laws, and approve this conservation restriction so that it can be sent to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs to be approved at the state level and recorded in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any counsel discussion on this item?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? That is unanimous. This is item 2018-162. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have the signature pages here for the president and the town manager.
Okay. You go leave him with the clerk. It's almost 11 o'clock, so I just want to see if I have a motion to go past 11 o'clock? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor going past 11:00 PM? Anyone opposed? One opposition. All right. We're going to go back to old business and finish that up. Counsel Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018-149?
Under old business may be acted upon, 2018-149, appointments to a board committee or commission. Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Disability Commission, Steven Spillane, 44, Liam Lane. Centerville is a regular member to term expiring 6/30/2021. And Youth Commission, George Cole, Hyannis, is a regular student member to a term expiring 6/30/2019, as written.
Do I have a second? Any counsel discussion on this item?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second to move the question. All those in favor moving the question?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-149, appointments to a board committee or commission. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018-150?
Okay, under old business, 2018-150, this is reappointments to a board or committee or commission. All these, except for the Library Committee, and I'll read that date separately, but all these are expiring, terms expiring 6/30/2021. The Airport Commission, Mary Smith, is a regular member to a term expiring, I already said, 6/30/2021. John Griffin, Joseph Berlande, these are all regular members. Comprehensive Financial Advisory, John Shonher, Hector Gunther, Joseph Mladenich. Conservation Commission, Dennis Hoole. Community Preservation Committee, FP Tom Lee, as a Conservation Commission representative. Council on Aging, Helen Stretch, as a regular member. John Alden is a regular member. Anna Volakis is a regular member. Barbara Cross is a regular member. Disability Commission, Sheila Malkay, regular member. Historical Commission, Elizabeth Mumford, is a regular member. Cheryl Powell, as an alternate member. Marilyn Feifield is a regular member. Housing Committee, Donald Line, regular member. Human Services Committee, Scott Fitzgerald, is a representative member. JFK Memorial Trust Fund, Robert Jones, is a regular member. Lynn Poyant, as a regular member. Library Committee, these terms expire on 6/30/2019. Suzanne Kelly, Sturgis Library. Christine Lapine, Weldon Library. Laura Young, Osterville Library. Karen Resenders, Centerville Library. Margaret Sutfina, Centerville Library. Fred Schlipp, Sturgis Library. Licensing Authority, we're back to terms expiring 6/30/2021. Larry Decker for the Licensing Authority. Old Kings Highway Historic District Commission, Polly Brazelton is an alternate member. Planning Board, Stephen Hellman, as a regular member. Water Quality Advisory Committee, Barry Gallus, as a regular member. Waterways Committee, John Mead, is a regular member. Robert Hazelton is a regular member. Zoning Board of Appeals, Jake Dewey, regular member. Paul Pennard, as an associate member. Kyle Evanco, as an associate member, as written.
Do I have a second? Counselor Wallace.
Yes. I would, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend the reappointments to boards, committee, and commissions. Mary Smith is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/21. I would like that name removed. In addition to that, Karen Resendez, as a regular member representing the Centerville Library, to a term expiring 6/30/2019.
And that's because we received resignation letters from both since the first reading?
That's correct.
Any discussion on the amendment as proposed? Do I have a motion to move the amendment?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of the amendment as proposed? And that is unanimous. So this is item 2018-150. All those in favor of this item as amended? And that is unanimous. All right. Moving into new business now. Item 2018-151. Counselor Levesque, could you please read that and refer to a public hearing on June 21st, 2018?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just writing down that date. New business, refer to a public hearing on June 21st, 2018. Item number 2018-151, appropriation loan order in the amount of $340,000 pursuant the temporary repair to private roads program regarding Butler Avenue, Ocean Avenue, Clark Avenue, Prospect Avenue, Hotel Avenue, Summerbell Avenue, Lake Elizabeth Drive, Valley Avenue, Laurel Avenue, Vine Avenue in Centerville, as written.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of referring item 2018-151 to a public hearing on June 21st, 2018? And that is unanimous. All right, moving along into new business. Counselor Neary, could you please read item 2018-154 and refer to a second reading on June 21st, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business, a first reading. Item number 2018-154, the repeal of section 241-44.1 of the Town of Barnstable Administrative Code for the Agricultural Commission.
All right, I have a second. All those in favor of referring item 2018-154 to a second reading on June 21st, 2018? That is unanimous. All right. Counselor Dagewan, could you please read item 2018-155 and refer to a second reading on June 21st, 2018?
Thank you, Mr. President. I refer item 2018-155 to a first reading on June 21st, 18.
Second reading.
Second reading, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Mark.
All right. This is item 2018-155. All those in favor referring to second reading on June 21st, 2018? That is.
Item 2018-155, repeal of section 241-27 of the Town of Barnstable Administrative Code, Personnel Board, and amendments to chapter 242 of the Barnstable Code, personnel, and chapter 401, article 8, personnel regulations. I refer it to a second reading on 6/21/18.
Okay. Sorry about that. When I heard second reading before, I thought that was the end of it. So I have a second now. This is item 2018-155. All those in favor referring this to a second reading on June 21st, 2018? And that is unanimous. Counselor Wallace, could you please read item 2018-156 and refer to a second reading on June 21st, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. New business, refer to a second reading, item number 2018-156, for June 21st, 2018. Repeal of chapter 241-45.2 of the Town of Barnstable Administrative Code, Renewable Energy Commission, as written.
Do I have a second? This is item 2018-156. All those in favor referring this item to a second reading on June 21st, 2018? And that is unanimous. Counselor Wallace, can you continue on with item 2018-157 and refer that to a second reading on June 21st, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. New business, referring to a second reading, item number 2018-157, for June 21st, 2018. Repeal of chapter 241-45.5 of the Town of Barnstable Administrative Code, Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee, as written.
Do I have a second? This is item 2018-157. All those in favor referring this to a second reading on June 21st, 2018? And that is unanimous. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018-158 and refer to a second read on June 21st, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. Under new business, this is a first reading. Refer to a second reading on June 21st, 2018. Item 2018-158, amend section 241-45.1A of the Administrative Code Amendment, Human Services Committee, by reducing the number of members from nine to seven, as written.
Second.
Do I have a second? This is item 2018-158. All those in favor referring this item to a second read on June 21st, 2018? And that is unanimous. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-159 and refer to the planning board?
Yes, Mr. President. Under new business, referred to be referred to the planning board, 2018-159, order to amend the zoning ordinance to prohibit non-medical marijuana in all zones, districts within the Town of Barnstable, as drafted.
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of referring item 2018-159 to the planning board? And that is unanimous. Anyone opposed? One in opposition. All right. Going to move down. We, next item, 2018-161. I invite Elizabeth Jenkins up, the Director of Planning and Economic Development. Counselor Flores, could you please read that item?
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business, item 2018-161, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $3,753,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, 2017 Mass Works Infrastructure Program, as written.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to request acceptance of a $3.753 million grant from the State of Massachusetts under their Mass Works Infrastructure Program. The fund will be, or the grant, I'm sorry, will be used to fund roadway intersection and pedestrian improvements in the area of the Industrial Park in Hyannis. It will provide funding for signalization of two intersections, the intersection of Wilkins and Addox, additionally, the intersection of Kids Hill Road and Finney's Lane. It will provide pedestrian infrastructure, at minimum, a six-foot sidewalk all the way down Independence Lane from Mary Dunn to Route 132, including connections to other existing infrastructure on side streets, as well as a connection to the proposed Cape Cod Rail Trail parking lot on Mary Dunn. And finally, it will provide some sewer and water improvements to unimproved property in the Industrial Park with the hopes of spurring additional investment in that area. So I just want to recognize the, certainly, the leadership of the town manager and assistant town manager in assisting us to apply for this grant, Dan Santos and Amanda Rogero from DPW, who spent many hours helping us put the application together, and certainly the support of all of our legislative delegation in receiving this. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any counsel discussion on this item? Counselor Flores.
Just one more recognition. I don't think this grant would have actually come through had not been from Maria Morasko, who we all worked very closely with, making sure that this did happen. So she should be commended for her effort.
Absolutely.
Counselor Schnep.
You referenced the connection to the Cape Cod Rail Trail, but is any of the money actually going to be used for making improvements for bikeways?
At this point, the preliminary design is indicating that we will be able to install a minimum, a six-foot sidewalk in this location. We haven't yet done a feasibility study on the potential route of the Cape Cod Rail Trail through this area. So the thinking is, you know, again, not having really engaged in that process with Mass DOT in terms of feasibility for connection, at minimum, this would provide a basis for the continuation of that improvement through that area. And if nothing else, provide a great opportunity for some of the new residential development we're seeing to be connected to that resource.
But actual bike lanes?
Not bike lanes. So the, again, the preliminary design is showing off-street multi-use path, so accommodating more kind of traditional bikers. One of the challenges is that Independence Road is a private road, so we've been able to work and get easements for this improvement there. But that's the extent of the improvement.
Thank you.
Any of the counselors? Counsel Flores.
You know, I'm really excited, the fact that we're actually going to have sidewalks that begin at Mary Dunn, go all the way out to 132. It's something that I've pursued since I've been on the Town Council, because with that being in my district, you see so often children, adults, walking in the middle of the street, walking on the edge of the street. So this is something that we have been wanting for a good period of time. Happy to see that the state is coming through to fund it. So thank you.
Any other counselors?
One question.
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. Counsel Neary's left the dais. This is item 2018-161. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you, Elizabeth. Counsel Beedenbender, could you please read? Councilor Beedenbender, could you please read item 2018-163 and refer to the planning board?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, referring to the planning board for public hearing. This is item number 2018-163. This is to amend chapter 240, article 3 of the zoning ordinances to create a cannabis overlay District A and cannabis overlay District B, and district regulations for establishing and operating registered recreational marijuana dispensaries.
Do I have a second? This is item 2018-163, all those in favor referring this item to the planning board? And that is unanimous. And I also like the zoning committee actually to look at item 2018-163 and item 2018-159, the council zoning committee. All right, Councilor Rap, could you please read item 2018-164?
This is a first, new business, first reading, 2018-164, appointments to a board or committee or commission. Town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board or committee or commission. Board of assessors, William Gurefi, 22 Thornberry Lane. Centerville is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Board of health, previous town councilor, John Norman, 1625 Old Post Road. Marson's Mills is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Planning board, Stephen Costello, 255 Scudder Road, Osterville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Sanding Neck Board, previous town councilor, Ann Kennedy, 70 Van Duser Road, Comacuit, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Robert Lovell, 12 New London Avenue, Marson's Mills, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Thomas O'Neil, 58 Hallway Drive, West Barnstable, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021, as read.
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of referring item 2018-164 to a second read on June 21, 2018? And that is unanimous. Councilor Flores?
Yeah, just a point of information, I want to commend all of the folks who have served on boards over the past number of years. We've received many, many years of service and in particular, having been one of the liaisons to the Sanding Neck Board, I want to especially recognize the commitment and the hard work that Richard French has given the town as chairman of that particular board, I think, for over a dozen years, so I'd like to commend him and publicly recognize him.
Great, thank you very much for that. Councilor Rap Grissette, could you continue on, read item 2018-165, refer to a second read on June 21?
Under new business, refer to a second reading on June 21, 2018, item 2018-165, reappointment to a board committee or commission for the cultural council, council, cultural council, and it's actually the Mid-Cape Cultural Council. Kimberly Rumberger is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021, and Georgia Craft is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021.
Second.
Second. This is item 2018-165, all those in favor referring this to a second read on June 21, 2018? And that is unanimous. Can you finish us up with item 2018-166?
Again, refer to a second reading on June 21, 2018, under new business, item 2018-166, Administrative Code Amendment, term limits for chairs of multiple-member boards, committee or commissions, as read, as written.
Second.
Do I have a second? Item 2018-166, all those in favor referring this to a second read on June 21, 2018? And that is unanimous. And that ends the orders of the day. Our next regular scheduled meeting is June 21, 2018. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Have a good night, everyone.